Please join us in the flag salute.
Let us know.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Please note for the record, all council members are present.
Okay, adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, bring this to budget workshop, under item A, which is department presentations, and the first up is Public Works, pages 109 through 156. Don't hurt your back carrying all them pages.
Oh sir, this would be if I were carrying the reports we turn in the Regional Water Quality Control Board, that would really hurt my back.
So welcome back.
Well, thank you, it was lovely to be back. Had a lovely trip, and I was just telling some of the colleagues, actually because of the locations I was in, had some really neat experiences that kind of directly relate to the job. Certainly being in Amsterdam gave me a unique perspective on complete streets and what you can really do with a community if you want, where the bicycle mode of transportation has the highest priority there, over pedestrians, and certainly over cars, and it was neat to be in a couple of communities that were like that, because both the Netherlands and Luxembourg, very similar. It was also neat to be able to be in a place like the Netherlands and all of the Low Countries, where you can look at how they deal with rising sea level, because they're all four meters below sea level, so it's sort of an interesting.
The Dutch boy with the finger in the dyke?
You know, they have some giant pumps, they really don't need him anymore. But then the other experience I did get to go on a high-speed rail, I took the Talis High-Speed Rail from Amsterdam down to Brussels, and very anticlimactic, that high-speed rail is located in a part of the country that is just blah, and it's underground a lot, but it gave me, I think, a good perspective on sorts of things being proposed in California, and it gave me an opportunity to look at the operations and maintenance yards and such as well.
Is it traditional, or is it magnetic levitation?
It's traditional. Talis is an older one, and even the TGV, the French one, the Trancom Vitesse, is not Maglev yet, but interesting experience, my family had no idea that we were actually going on a civil engineering field trip, but they tolerated it quite well, so it was good, it was a good experience, thank you.
You always build that in.
It's kind of what we do sometimes. So, Honorable Mayor, Member of 10 Council Members, it's nice to be back, let's go ahead, and we'll go through department presentation, can we bring the lights down just a little bit, please, Wendy? I don't know, well, there is nobody in the audience, but just so I can see it perhaps. Thank you so much. So this is the departmental breakout, right now with the addition of the Marina folks, we've got 22.75 people that are working under Public Works, and the .75 is because we have part-time employees and we just compile them into full-time equivalents. It's interesting when you look at this, it really strikes you that one-third of our workload really is being done by the Marina, one-third of the workload is being done by utilities personnel, so if you count the sewer, the water, the GVMID folks, and the admin staff is 12%, and that's a pretty reasonable number for admin, usually you see admin up to about 15% when you're managing projects and such. Little bit of some oddities in here, if you really start to try and drill down into this, because what you start to see is that the low numbers on the right-hand side of the chart, we've got buildings and grounds and turf and landscape, you've got to understand that this is reflecting city employees, and where their time is being spent, and what's happening in those general fund type accounts is because of the reduction of personnel, what we've done is the one-team leader in operations and maintenance has really become a contract and a purchase order manager, so very, very many of those services, those general fund departments are being provided by contractors, and he's managing them, so it's one person doing that. Whereas in years past, we had a two-person team that was doing turf and landscape, we had a separate person that was assigned fully to streets, we had one person that was assigned full-time to Sierra Point Landscaping and Lighting, those have all kind of gone away now, and we're doing it all under contract, so that's why this particular slide looks the way it does. We were asked a question about, could we give you some examples of how people are spending their time? So this is a chart that represents something we started, it was over 12 years ago, when I first came to the city, the teams were not particularly structured, they were not assigned to their own unique capabilities, so we sat down and we divided them into three teams at the time, we had a water team, we had a sewer team, and we had the Buildings and Grounds team, each with a team leader, each with a superintendent, or a supervisor working above them, and what this represents is what a three-person team does, so in a month, so if you take three people times, you know, four weeks, and you add their hours up, that's what they get, you get 480 hours availability, and of course, if you start at the bottom, you see that, you know, we have to indicate that there's time for vacation and holidays and sick, and we just sort of average that out, but if you're starting at the top, if you look at daily, really what we have here is what we're telling you is that, in that very first row, that for pump station maintenance, we spend three hours a day going out and maintaining the water pump stations, that's how long it takes us to go out and visit each of the lift stations, so, and then the next column is just simply a conversion factor out there, so that we can take that daily task and tell you how many hours we spend in a four-week month then to do that, and so that ends up being 60, and so then when you take all these tasks, and you total them up at the end, you get the 480 that you would expect to find, because, you know, we're fully utilizing the hours. Some of the other items that are in there, the contract hours, you see the one item we've got in there, we don't do water sample testing in-house, we pay somebody, we pay a technician to come out and do that, and to bring them out to the laboratory for us, and then we have the unassigned task, that's sort of a leftover from what we had before, it is something that we still track, it's one of those things that we're trying to identify for ourselves, there are tasks that we think we need to be doing, but with the current resources, we just can't do that, so we don't want to let it drop off the page and just say, well, this is what we've always done, so that's all we do, this is, this kind of helps us and gives us a reminder. So that represents, you know, one example of how we keep track of this. We don't update this as frequently as we used to, probably five years ago, when we did have three full teams and three team leaders, and we did have the supervisor, we updated this on a monthly basis, now we update it a little more casually, we try and use it on a biannually or an annual basis, to just kind of say, hey, where have we been? Where are we going? Are we aligning ourselves properly? It's also a little bit easier now, one of the big reasons we did this as well, when I first got here, was that we were very upside-down in how we were doing maintenance. When I arrived here, we were spending 80% of our time responding to service requests and 20% of our time doing scheduled maintenance, completely backwards. So, we made a real strong effort to do that, and to make sure that our focus was on making sure that we're proactively going out there and taking care of the system, so that we don't have water quality failures, so that we don't have catastrophic failures that we can avoid, so that's been a good experience. In the last few years, we've implemented the government outreach system, that online system that you can utilize, and that's been really helpful in helping us understand where those requests are coming from, and I'll show you a slide on that later. This is the Marina maintenance, this is the other side of the house that we picked up, I think the biggest thing that's going to stand out to you here is that, number one, this is just for the full-time maintenance staff, so that's three employees that we have down there now, we have one team leader and two maintenance workers, and you recall that the reason we brought two maintenance workers down there was to do the dock repair project, supposed to be an 18-month to two-year process, we just got the final employee for that team hired in the last two months, I believe, but you'll see that when you go under scheduled monthly resources for staff, they're spending 360 hours a month on dock maintenance, and that's what they should be doing, that's where we think their maintenance should be, that's what we hired them for, and we're tracking that. I go down, and I just recently set up a schedule where I go down and meet with the team leader and meet with the harbor master on a bi-weekly basis, and get a handle of how they're doing things. They've been working on Dock Three pretty solidly, they expect to be done by August, and then we're going to move on to the next dock, I believe it's Dock Five that we're going to move to, so that's going pretty well, they're learning a lot on Dock Three, so we think we're going to go a little bit faster, it's always one of those things when you take it apart and say, oh, so that's how they put this together, so hopefully they did it the same way on the next dock, and we'll be able to, we always hope, right, and that maybe they'll have the same dimensions and such. And then at the lower left bottom of this slide, what you see is the things that our part-time employees do, we do have two maintenance employees that are down there, one of them works about 20 hours a week, the other is only available on Sunday, so he comes in and does certain tasks, but these are the types of chores that's happening there. This is government outreach, in the last year, we had 252 requests recorded there, pretty apparent where the overwhelming majority of our requests are coming in, maintenance to the building and parks, that's it, that's over half of the requests that we get, and the rest of them are relatively evenly distributed, so that's good information to me, I like that, this is one of those things that I check every month, we check to make sure how the closure rate is going. We're doing a little bit of work with the system, we find one of the things that happens is that when we get the request and we schedule a repair, we send an email back to the requester and say, thank you very much, we receive your request, it's been scheduled for repair. Unfortunately, one of the things that we just found out about is what the system is doing is then automatically sending a survey out to the person, and saying, hey, how did you like it, was it wonderful, is it this, that, and the other thing, and, you know, some people will say, are you kidding me, it hasn't even been done yet, I just got a note that said you're going to do it, so we're working with the system manager to make sure that that doesn't happen, we're not trying to send the wrong message out to people, but at the same time, we don't want to leave this service request hanging out there for months and months, and never getting back to them, and saying, hey, we aren't even being a note saying, yeah, we get your request, we're going to get to it, so we're trying to fix that up. New position, there's one person that's proposed in the budget this year, this is going to be in the admin section, it's an engineering technician, this person's going to be working across the department, about a quarter of their time in streets, and really the overwhelming majority of their time, working in water, working in GVMID, working in the sewer system. The primary reason we're doing this is, I think as the council's well aware, the engineering staff was reduced by 40%, primarily by attrition, but during our times when we were struggling a little bit with the economy. One of the items that we're going to be having in future, when we raise water and sewer rates, is talking about the $5.4 million of capital projects that we need to do, some of those are master plans, some of those are construction plans, I need the two registered civil engineers that I have left in the department to manage those projects directly, I need their experience, I need their maturity, I need their dedication and knowledge of your system, so in order to do that, I need someone at a sub-professional level, and when I say sub-professional, I mean someone who is not licensed as a professional engineer, to get rid of the mundane record-keeping type tasks that they have, so we were joking a little bit about, you know, don't break your arms carrying all that paperwork up here, it's just heinous, the amount of paperwork that we produce out here, particularly on the water and sewer side of things, where there are reports that are happening nearly daily, and they take up an incredible amount of time of a licensed engineer, when they shouldn't, when it's a task that you could sit down with a non-licensed person who has got some engineering background, and you could explain to them what goes on, they could compile the amount of data, and then you could in a very quick cursory fashion review it to do a QAQC, check on it, and it would be lovely, it would be absolutely fine, so that's why we're proposing this person. Some of the other things that this person is going to...
Quick, efficient fashion, we don't want to be cursory.
Ah, yes, okay, I'll accept that, I will accept that, sir. A couple of the other things that we really don't have the capability to do now in-house is we just have very limited capability to manage any of the database of the city streets that we have, of managing the pavement management system, which is the computer system we utilize to indicate the condition of the streets, and which street should be prioritized for which type of repairs during the year, we can't manage our GIS data, we don't have any limited CAD production capability of small projects, I mean, if I'm going to do that, I have to turn to my senior civil engineer and say, hey, can you go off and design these plans, and that's just, that's just working at the wrong pay grade to be doing that, when you can have somebody at a non-professional level doing that, so that's why we're requesting these positions. What am I doing now? Am I going to the next slide? I think I'm going to go right into capital projects, is that where we're at here?
End of the presentation, thank you.
And I think I'm going to do capital projects along up here, is that right, Wendy? I'm sorry, I'm still not quite sure which time zone or which language I should be speaking here as we recover. Fortunately, everybody in the countries we went to is very, very good at speaking English, I think there was only one place the entire time where I had a little trouble, we were on the eastern part of Luxembourg, bordering Germany, and the young lady there was trying to tell me in French how much something had cost, we had, you know, we had some baguettes with pate in them, and I couldn't understand her French, and I have no German capability, so I finally just handed her 20 euro and trusted her to make change properly, and she, I'm sure she did, but otherwise, across the board, if you know how to say hello, goodbye, thank you, it was just fine, people were more than happy to say, yes, my English is better than your French, or German, or Dutch, so let's just speak in that language. So, capital projects for '14, '15, little bit of a misnomer, because what you will find is that all of the projects in here, except for two, have a home in the budget, they are all in one of the departments, across the board, what we have done with these, if we have placed them in the sub-account 52241, which is Department Special Expenses, so that's where they have a home, but we're referring to them as deferred projects, because these are things that we haven't done, that we need to do, and that these are projects that we're recommending they do, but they are in the operational budget, they're not in a separate capital budget. So here we go, go through the list, slope repair, at 266 Santa Clara, that's a hillside that's starting to fail on a regular basis, it's up above a fire hydrant, it's right above the main part of the street, we're getting it into the storm brain system, so it needs to be worked on. Mission Blue, we need to do some painting of the interior, we've had the building for a while, we just haven't painted it. Pothole repair, obviously, this is money that we get from Measure M, this is the San Mateo County Measure M that was passed well over 20 years ago now, and that we continue to receive funds for, this is, that money's actually in two different departments, it's probably irrelevant for our purposes, but that's where it is, that's part of the money that we use in addition to gas tax to pay for paving the streets of your...
What kind of taxes Measure M...
What do you mean, sir?
How's the money raised in Measure M?
It's retail tax, it's a quarter percent.
It's the sales tax?
Yes, sir, sales tax.
This is on page 118, right, Randy, these deferred projects?
Um, so, no, I don't, are they?
Yeah.
Is it on 118?
Yeah, 118.
Different ones are, there's different ones on different pages throughout.
They're on different pages.
Yeah, the Mission Blue interiors on a different one, but the majority of them here, I think.
Right, well, if you'd like, I could tell you, I don't believe it's consolidated in one place in the budget as it's due, it's not, so, I mean, if you'd like, as we go through, instead of me trying to go rapid-fire, I could tell you which department each one's in, but as I said earlier, they're in each of the departments, that's where you found them, and there are two that are not, and I'll point those out to you, I'll get them, that may be easier.
Big ones.
Yeah, not too bad, not too bad, they're not too bad. So then, on San Bruno Avenue, kind of the backside of San Bruno Avenue, we've got a retaining wall that's starting to fail, so certainly something we'd like to take care of before we have a catastrophic failure down there.
Could I ask how you're planning to do that? I mean, the style of retaining wall?
It's, um, it is not going to be a cast-in-place drill pile, we're not going to do a vertical wall, we're going to try and do a setback wall on it.
Because I know that, you know, they use kind of the hole-to-hill approach?
Yes.
Along other parts of San Bruno Avenue, and I know that has a much better aesthetic...
Exactly, that's why we're not going to do the typical, what you see in a lot of places is there's an old standard that was adopted, there was an old set of retaining wall standards that were adopted back when, is that the Thousand Block of Sierra Point design was occurring there, the one that's on the other side of the canyon, and, you know, the cast-in-place H-beams with the wood lagging was one standard, that has some interesting applications, and it kind of almost fits in with the topography, but I agree with you 100%, that would not be appropriate on San Bruno, so we're going to do a laid-back wall on that, which is why, even though it's a relatively short stretch, it's relatively expensive, because to do that, you have to do a much larger excavation, so that's the difference between the two.
Well, a number of years ago, I presented to the council on how to make those aesthetically pleasing, and they went silent on it, not this council, but another one.
Really?
Yeah. I still got it in my computer, if you want it.
Sure.
I put an old soldier beam in the wooden one, so...
Yeah, 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 you just put some lags in front of them.
And how close is that to the houses on San Bruno Avenue?
It's not terribly close to the houses, but it's terribly close to a very narrow point in the roadway, and so that's why we don't want it to fail, because then we would shut down one of the entryways to town.
If you go over it, you'll see the visqueen over it with sandbags hanging off the top, to kind of hold the visque.
Yeah, that's a lovely spot right there, isn't it? That was a temporary thing, and, you know, but, you know, it's like the temporary K-rail on Bay Shore of Blue Ice House Hill, it's...
So, is, on that project, is there any responsibility from the property owners for...
Oh, ma'am, that's a right-of-way. Our right-of-way is surprisingly large, just about everywhere in town, we have a 40-foot public right-of-way, and actually on Tellaro, we have 50 feet of width, you would never know that from driving down that street, that the city owns 50 feet of width there, but we do.
Wipe out half the houses if we took it.
Yeah, that's why I'm going to try...
Like Kings Road.
And can you talk a little about the slope repair at 266 Santa Clara, where is that, and what...
Sure, what about it, ma'am?
Just...
So, this is if you're, well, if, why?
Yeah, I have, I'm not...
Oh, okay, oh, I'm sorry, so, sure, so if you come in from Santa Clara, from Brisbane Elementary School, you've got the big set of houses there, thank you.
There's two houses that are close to it.
Yeah, well, you've got, well, what you've got is you've got that first set of units, there's two or three homes that are right there on San Bruno, Santa Clara, and then there's one, two houses down, and then there's kind of an opening of land, and that's where it's, it's really quite steep there, and it's just started to fail and unravel, so if you went out there and looked at it now, the hillside is coming down, and it's up above the curb, so we're trying to make sure that it, we need to dig into that and lay it back and stabilize it a little bit, because it fails a lot on us during the rains, and we're out there cleaning it on a pre-regular basis.
And what would you propose to use to stabilize it? It's not a retaining wall.
No, 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 it's an excavation-type process, it's an excavation and laying the slope back, to the maximum extent that we can, we try and stick with, you know, a typical measure that doesn't require a lot of reinforcement.
And that's area that's in-between the houses?
Yes, it's in-between houses right now, correct.
And are these things that have been aggravated by construction above them, or just...
I think it, no, I think in this particular case, it's just the nature of the topography we live on.
It's pretty steep there.
It's very steep.
So how is it that there's city property in-between the private properties, wouldn't...
It's because of the width of the roadway that we own, so it is laterally between two houses, or there might even be two full lots there, but because the city street is 40 feet wide, we own a significant portion of that, because the roadway there is not even 20 feet wide.
Okay.
And that the opposite side of the roadway is built all the way out to the right-of-way line, so the hillside, the uphill side on that side is not, so we own quite a bit of it.
Okay, thank you.
So, let me get to the next slide, Mission Blue Storage Shed, this is just an item that the Parks Department has requested, that we need to put storage out there for different miscellaneous materials that we have. Inside the Community Center, we've already talked about painting the inside of the Community Center, but we need to do the lower walls, and we need to put a chair rail in or a rug in, so I'm not, with that, I'm not talking about wainscoting like what we have in here in the building, but just a rub rail is what we're talking about, because what we find is that when you have buildings with chairs and people rub up against them, they damage the paint, and so we end up destroying the paint, and so we think that if we put a rub rail in there, it'll mitigate a lot of that. The Community Park Gazebo, obviously, another item that we've just have needed to do some work on. Up, back up at the Community Center, there's, or in town at the Community Center, rather, there's a retaining wall that just needs some work, it's starting to fail a little bit.
One in the back, right?
Yes, sir.
We talked about it.
Exactly, exactly, that's the one, exactly. We have some energy-saving measures, on this page, you're going to see there are two energy-saving measures, these were developed in coordination with San Mateo County Energy Watch project, and with PG&E, they came in and did a rather detailed study, and what we selected out of those was a number of projects that had a payback period of three to seven years, and the beauty of these is that they're all going to be, once we've paid for them, PG&E will then reimburse us, and then we can do on-bill financing, payback for it at 0% interest, so it's a pretty good deal. Under the Recreation Facilities, that's going to be at the Community Center, Mission Blue, the Sunrise Room, the Library, and primarily what we're doing there, you can see the cost is not very much, but we're upgrading the exiting signs from incandescents to LEDs, we're putting in seven-day programmable thermostats, and we're weatherizing the exterior doors, all things that make good sense, and things you would generally do in your house, I guess, except for the exit signs, I don't know anybody that has those at their home. Community Center Handrail, this is a very popular project, so we hope to put that in, get it done.
Wasn't that on the last slide?
Uh, no, ma'am, that was, there was a rub rail at Mission Blue, I believe, on the last side, that was the chair rail, right, so this is...
The retaining wall.
This is next to the retaining wall, this leads you when you come out of where the seniors have lunch, and you try and get up into the new garden, it gives you a handhold on there, so that's what we're talking about there. Painting of the fire station exterior, it's the darnedest thing, if you don't paint wooden structures, they just start to get really dry-run on it, and this one really absolutely needs to be done very soon, the building is going to start soldering if we don't do that. Also, of course, once we get up there on the roof and started looking at the HVAC units as we were starting to recommission the building and get it back into service, we found out that a lot of those units that are original are starting to show their age, they're starting to rust, they fail on a pretty irregular basis, we have a plumber go out there and having to restart them up, and we've had the HVAC maintenance people go out there and work on it, so they've reached their time. I did try and get the Energy Watch people to do it, but they just couldn't squeeze that into one of their programs, so, we tried. The last energy, yes, sir?
I have a question related to that. One of the things that, of course, we accomplished last year was the re-roofing and hopefully the waterproofing of the exterior, and one of the consequences of the problems we had in the past was the existence of mold, and my question is, what kind of ongoing maintenance monitoring do we have to make sure that the mold isn't there, doesn't reappear, how do we check and make sure we're okay?
Well, the primary thing we're doing is by the people who are living there, looking to see if we're getting water intrusion, because you're not having water intrusion, you're not going to have mold development, the mold that was there was completely removed, stripped down to the bare wood, sanitized, and then encapsulated afterwards, and then all the sheeting and such is put back, so the occupants are always our first indicator to make sure we're not getting anything wet, we're also doing an annual roofing inspection on the building.
We're pretty, oh, I'm sorry, we're pretty confident that everything was removed and that it's not going to come back again unless there's some water...
Absolutely, we did detailed testing on that, we did detailed mold support testing, and the way we did it is we went in, and in three or four different locations, we took air mold samples before we started the test, and then we had the contractor go in and set up his visqueen, because he had to set up a negative pressurized containment area, we did mold spore samples then, inside and outside his area, and the reason we were doing them outside the area is because I wanted to make sure he had kept his negative containment working, because if he made a mess and the mold got outside, that was going to be his problem, and then we did the testing afterwards, and the first testing failed, so the contractor had to come back, had to redo it, and then we did the retesting, and then when we did the final retest, we retested the whole station, it all met all of the indoor quality standards, and it's just fine. So, we're pretty satisfied, we're pretty confident it's not going to happen, and again, it's just really a matter of, you keep the water out, then you're not going to have a mold problem.
Okay, good. The reason I ask is that when they had the open house at the fire station, I was asking some of the, you know, old-timers in the fire department about what their experience was and what they knew about this and so forth, and they were fairly uninformed, so I was kind of surprised, and so, I just, so I promised that I would inquire, make sure that everything is going to be safe for them, and so that's obviously the most important objective.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we're not going, we don't want to put, nobody wants to put someone in a condition where their, you know, their health is at risk, that's...
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. So then we have the last energy-saving measures, I'm sorry, did you have a question? I didn't...
I was going to follow up on that, I thought when we did the revitalization of the firehouse that when they were talking about it, they were going to come back in in six months or at specific periods to do retesting, so my question was somewhat answered by your response to this question.
And certainly, if somebody had a burning desire to do that, you could, just commission the air quality tech to come back in and take some...
I know at one point, we talked about putting moisture sensors in there, but that didn't...
Yeah, it just, it really is not very feasible for the type of roofing that we have.
I meant in the walls.
Right, right.
Okay. Okay, continue.
Okay, thank you. So, the energy-saving measures, in this case, at City Hall and the fire station, what we're doing here at City Hall is we're just optimizing this water source heat pump system that we have, it's the control system that really needs a little tweaking, we're trying to make sure that it's really operating at the lowest energy consumption that it can, and at Station 81, what we're talking about doing there is upgrading all of the existing incandescent fluorescent lamps that they have, they're still working on T12 lamps, so we're going over to T8 lamps and putting the compact fluorescent. The project looks a little pricey, and there's a specific reason for that, because there's an unknown challenge that we have there, one of the things that happens in the fire The project's, it looks a little pricey and there's a specific reason for that because there's an unknown challenge that we have there. One of the things that happens in the fire station is that all of their lights are tied to the alerting system. So if you, if you've ever been over at the fire station and you hear the ring down and you get the call up that, you know, Station eighty-one, you're, or Engine eighty-one, you're being sent out, all the lights come on. All the lights come on, the gas stove automatically shuts off, the door opens, all that kind of thing happens automatically. And we need to make sure that whatever we do with the change out of the fluorescent bulbs and ballast, that continues to work. We, we, because you don't want the firefighters to be there in the middle of the night and the lights not come on to wake them up, right, when they're, they're getting sent out to a, to an accident or a fire or something along those lines. So it's a, it's a little more expensive, but I, I think it's, over the long run, it's, it's time and effort well spent. Uh, one of our favorite projects, we've talked about this for a long time, a, a concept plan about establishing a pedestrian walkway from Tularia all the way down to Alvarado. Uh, the Bicentennial Walkway, this is a project that's been in my CIP list for thirteen years to, uh, to replace the railings and to put some, we didn't put the words in here, but vandal-proof bollards. We just have some people that love to destroy those. I don't know why that is, but they do. Putting a pool canvas shade in, this is just giving people a little more shade for those people who, uh, who don't, who can't find a spot underneath the solar panel that we have. Resurfacing, replastering, and retiling the pool floor. This is pretty important maintenance that we need to do on the pool now. Again, it's one of those capital items we've had that we just haven't had the, uh, the funds to do some maintenance on, so we're going to need to do that. Still on the pool, yes, sir.
I just, uh, I'm thinking about the bollards, the, you know, the light standards along the walkways, which, when they were first installed, the vendor claimed that they were vandal-proof. Let me see how false that was.
That was thirty years ago.
Things change.
But anyway, I, I, because I remember one of the residents who lives there was observed on one occasion, uh, a teenage boy with a two-by-four just walking up the walkway and swinging as hard as he could at every one of them.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just trying to figure out, is, is there anything we can do to kind of reduce that kind of behavior? And I don't know what the heck it would be, and I guess with the police department sitting here, uh, it's relevant, uh, in whether there was some kind of signage that would, you know, help or, you know, parents are responsible. I don't know. But, um, I mean, it, just the wanton vandalism is just unbelievable that some people engage in. And I don't know whether there's anything more we can do, but if there is, and we're going to spend all this money, we sure help, don't want to see it, you know, destroyed in the first year or two.
Yeah, you know, it's frustrating as all get out to put things out and have them destroyed like that. It really is. This is, I know that while you were gone, you had some conversations about, uh, the Health and Safety Subcommittee and some of the pedestrian walkways. At one point in time, we had nine or ten of those yielded pedestrian signs up everywhere throughout town. And some night, some jackwad decided to run over and run them all down just because. You know, and that was, you know, five thousand dollars worth of material destroyed just because they could. And, and, you know, that's a very, very small percentage of a population, but it drives you a little goofy and, you know, I, just like there's a lot of things that drive us a little goofy, right? You know, for me, litter on the streets, things that people have seen out, but you know, how much, how much of your effort can you really put to that? How many, how many cameras do we put up everywhere until we start to look like downtown London, I guess, where there's a camera on every corner? You know, that's how we start to analyze it. I, I, I don't, that, that, that's a tough thing. I, I am just as frustrated as you are by it. I think in this case, it's, uh, it's probably going to be okay as long as we replace these, these bollards with concrete fixtures. It's going to be a, you know, require some real effort, but, you know, certainly it's kind of the philosophy I use with locks. I've never had things stolen when I've had a lock on it. So the, the perspective is that a lock keeps generally honest people generally honest. But somebody who really wanted to get into my stuff could have used bolt cutters and got to it. So you can make devices and you can set things up so that they generally encourage people to have good behavior. But there's going to be a jerk every now and then that's going to come along. And that's part of what my staff does is we repair things that, that people break, sometimes intentionally, sometimes accidentally.
And the police department has to make a report on it.
And sometimes when we're really lucky, they catch them. That's, and that's really the good thing. And I know they've caught people in acts of vandalism and we've had people go out and repaint stuff and do things, and that's great. And I, I've got to tell you, usually my experience is oftentimes when the parents know about it, that they're just as embarrassed as anybody else. They're just as mad as you and I are about it. You know, they, they're like, are you kidding me? You did what? And they want their parents to go out. That's not every case. I know that the police have to deal with some other people where their, the parents may have taught that behavior in their children in some cases, but that's a really, really small percentage of the population. So I think we do what we can and, and try and go through it. I don't know if, that, I don't think that satisfactorily answers it. I just, I guess I'm just expressing empathy with your position.
One suggestion you might want to do is, you know, there's those neighborhood watch signs, um, that you see sometimes. And, you know, I never really thought about what they meant until someone explained it to me that it's, it means that, you know, your neighbors, that you are supposed to watch out for anything that's going on that's suspicious and then report it. And so, you know, if, if it gets vandalized again, we might want to consider putting up a neighborhood watch sign by those walkways and informing the neighbors who live around there that that's a specific issue to look out for.
Certainly a kid walking up it with a two-by-four.
Yeah.
Baseball bats were the old ones. He used to get them too.
It, it almost seems that the more you put a sign up, the more it gives them the idea to do what you've just put a sign up to not do. And there is no, you know, accounting for why people will do those kind of things. But it's almost as if it gives them the idea to do it.
It, there is some weird mechanism that occasionally goes on there. I, I've seen that when, when I was previous employment in a water district where we had a relatively dangerous vault area that we didn't want people to get to and it was kind of out in the middle of nowhere. And if you fell into this one piece of it, you got sucked into this eight-foot aqueduct and then that became a pipe and not a good day for you. But people wanted to go out there because it was out in the middle of nowhere. So it didn't matter. Well, we, we'd put locks on it, we'd change things. People would go in. Yeah, one time we, we could tell somebody had gone and dragged an oxyacetylene torch, you know, a couple hundred yards through the woods and got in there and partied and, you know, spray painted, ha, ha, we got in on it. And it was just kind of ridiculous. We finally got to the point where we track walked in this giant concrete slab with this huge excavator and plopped it on top of it. There, move that. And that stopped it, but it was just counterproductive.
At that point, it's when you leave the lock off, the lock off and you say, okay.
Speaking of vandalism, I had one question. So on Quarry Road, there's that, I don't know what it is, but I thought it was like an earthquake measurement device. It's something that's.
It's a bollard.
A bollard, yeah. And I always would see it vandalized and it would be replaced and it would be vandalized again. You know, someone would just take something to it.
To keep vehicles out.
Okay.
Is what you're talking about.
Was that what that was for?
No, no, it's an earthquake sensing device that's part of the.
Down by the end, all the way down to Quarry.
It's on Quarry Road, um, just as you get past Lippman and you get to where the trucks make the turn. Is that right?
Pass the bollards.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's a USGS.
So who's responsible for maintaining that? Okay.
And you could actually go and look at the site and see it jiggle when it's jiggling.
Somebody's sitting on it?
No, no, no. I mean, the, what, what it's measuring. You, you can look at the points that they have, um, on their measurement devices.
Oh, okay, great.
Okay, but if it gets vandalized, um.
Not us.
Okay. Have to contact USGS.
Yeah, that's their challenge.
All right.
So I think we hit that. Um, so this is the gazebo, the, uh, the metal gazebo that we have at the pool. That, as you can tell, if you've been there lately, it's getting pretty rusted and it needs some work. And you can also see that the concrete is starting to spall a little bit, uh, across the pool. So we need to, we need to work on that as well. Uh, the gateway entrance, this is the project where we've talked about if you are coming into town across Tunnel Avenue Bridge, right on the right-hand side, there's that open area where we've tried to plant some trees and sort of keep the weeds down a little bit. But this, this is providing enough money so we can put some sort of vegetation there. The original concept that we're working with and that we're working with a consultant on is to come up with a native planting. But that's what this was, would allow is that us to put in a native planting, get it established, and then because it's native, hopefully not have to water it. So that's what this project is. And this is one of the, uh, the two projects that you will not find listed in one of the departments.
That's a new one, right?
I'm sorry, sir?
It's a new one.
It, well, it's a new one. It just, it didn't get into one of the departments, but it's, so it's here. Um, so here we go. These are, these are the non, uh, general fund type projects. The Light on Lagoon Way, there's been a conversation about whether we need some lighting at the intersection of Lagoon Way and Sierra Point Parkway. We've got a number in there as a placeholder right now. The, really the biggest challenge we have out there is we don't have electricity there. We don't have electricity that we can access. The, there is a, a, a traffic control management station that Caltrans has out there. And they've dragged power all the way from, there's a PG&E transformer in front of the corporation yard, and they placed it along Lagoon Way, but we can't access it because it's, it was just size for them. So we're going to have to get power out there. That makes it an expensive project. So I think we, we're probably going to want to sit down and have some conversations about, you know, what the problem is and what it is we're really trying to accomplish and see if there's maybe, you know, a, a different way that we can get to the same end.
Do you think that you could partner with one of the private properties there and tie into their source?
There's, there's nobody out there, sir.
Right.
This is out of Lagoon Way and Sierra Point Parkway. It's up at where you get on one-on-one.
Oh, okay. All right.
Randy, last year at, at, uh, league conference, I saw some pretty nice, um, solar-driven lights.
Right.
Um, is that something we could look at too?
I, that, that's kind of what I'm thinking about. I'm, I'm trying to, I, I need to sit down and ascertain what, what the, what the problem is. If the problem is that people can't see the stop signs or if they need more advanced warning. But we have a couple of those solutions up there. We've got the one, if you're coming down Guadalupe, coming back towards Mission Blue, there's that advanced warning sign because you're kind of on a curve. So that's set up so that you know that a, a, a traffic signal is going to be ahead of you. So something like that might work, something that just, you know, as simple as, you know, a flashing red light underneath a stop sign that lights it up all on a PV panel. Of course, the only challenge we're going to have with PV panels, we just talked about, about vandalism is I'm going to have to put it up on a fifteen-foot pole because otherwise people come along and steal them.
The one, the ones that Clark's talking about, I, I, there was a whole booth dedicated to that then, and they were up on top of the pole.
Right.
They were really nice.
Well, the panels will be. It's just a question, then you're going to bring the light down to where you want, right? But that's what you do. Because we've actually had the, the PV panels that have been stolen, the ones that we had when we did the Safe Routes to School years ago, and we put, um, some crossing signals at South Hill. Somebody went up and stole those, so we put in a bigger pole, so like, replace the panel. No matter of how, how high up a pole can you shitting? I guess I need to put bear grease on it or something.
Well, it's also, the light there, I mean, I'm not sure there's going to be much we can do besides a full-on signal to alert people to the four-way, to the three-way stop sign there. Um, but I think that whatever we do, we need to be careful of causing a big light standard out there to be visible from.
Light noise?
Town, yes.
From the freeway, right, right, ma'am, from the freeway, from the lagoon. I, I agree. So, I mean, so maybe we can, we, I think with this amount of money, we can look at photovoltaics, we can look at putting three-way intersection signs. We may get a little clearer. I mean, it certainly is dark. If you don't know where you're coming into Brisbane, the first time you see that, it is kind of off-putting in the dark. It's a little, whoa. Where am I? So we could, I, I'm sure there's something we can do to improve it a little bit.
So I asked, um, maybe this answers that question, whether or not the, the Sierra Point Line Atlantic landscape district went up that far.
They do.
And, but then there's some question as to whether there is a funding mechanism that's feasible there since that's fun, I guess, is in deficit, as I recall.
That's correct.
Conversation.
Well, actually, at this point in time, we've raised rates high enough that they are, um, in balance. The reserves are positive going in for fourteen, fifteen. In thirteen, fourteen, they're negative. They're positive in fourteen, fifteen. At the end, you know, June thirty, two thousand and fifteen, unless you do this project, then they'll be slightly negative.
Okay.
But we are collecting more than enough to offset the full cost of the ongoing maintenance. So we will be able to begin to build up a reserve, to be able to do capital projects and to do replacement as we need them without having to increase rates specifically for those.
Okay, good. So it wouldn't be in the utility fund.
No, it would be in the.
I think it was.
Yes. It'd be in the Sierra Point, and that's why it's not enclosed within the utility fund bracket.
Good. Thank you.
Sure. So some of the other projects we're looking at doing, drought contingency plan. Most water agencies will have a drought contingency plan already. And part of the reason for that is because they're required to do an urban water management plan. Because of our size, the two districts, we're never, we've never been required to do that. So we don't have an, a UWMP, if you will. Certainly with, with the drought that we've got going on, it, it strikes me that it makes a lot of sense now to start to really analyze that and to look at what sort of options we can do and what sort of things we can put into play. So that's why that, that is there. The next two plans, our current water and sewer master plans are circa two thousand and three. So normally you replace those every ten years. I think it's important to have those for us to get them updated, to understand the current conditions. And certainly to have those as a solid base will be a good thing to have in the event that any project might be approved out at the Baylands because then we will know what the existing conditions, the existing capacities of our system are. So we can make sure that whatever projects the developer is going to be required to do are really projects that are not going to have a negative impact on our system. So he'll take care of both his system and not have a negative impact on our system as well. Sierra Point Road Sewer Main Replacement, yes, sir, go ahead.
Comment.
Hmm?
As we all know, one of the complications though in the Baylands is Bay Shore Sanitary District.
Of course.
So I don't know how we deal with that, but that becomes a problem in any kind of master plan.
Um, it doesn't pose that much of a challenge for me, sir, to do a master plan because we just assume the existing boundaries are what the existing boundaries are. And what that allows us to do is then we just understand our backbone, our infrastructure, where our system is. And if there were any other areas that were not currently within our boundaries that happened to be incorporated, that happened to be added to us, then we just, what we're analyzing is their impact on our infrastructure.
If we wanted to do some kind of, you know, integrated wastewater, potable water kind of system, doesn't the division between different, uh, districts create a planning problem?
Uh, well, it could. It, it, it seems that for me to really answer that question, we've got to sit down and really see what, what the, the paradigms we'd be working are. What, you know, what questions do we assume are underlying? What are we trying to do? I would suggest that if we're trying to do out there, for instance, if we're, if we're talking about at the Baylands and if we're talking about doing recycled water, there are challenges in doing that. And if we presume that Bay Shore Sanitary is going to continue to be the, the sanitary sewer's provider, there would. But there are models throughout the state where that has been done before. I've worked with them before where you have two joint agencies that own a wastewater treatment plant and then they agreed to get together with another party that created a recycle water plan and those parties then sold it to the water service providers that were provided in the area and they moved the water along and through. And it can be done. So is it a challenge? Sure. Is it, is it something that's an obstacle that can't be overcome? I don't think so. If there are willing parties, just about anything can be, can be worked out.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir. Uh, the next project on there, Sierra Point Road Sewer Main Replacement, we've got a section of, uh, on Sierra Point Road where we've just had way too many challenges and, and a couple of blockages and we would really rather get in there. Sewer is just one of those things, I think, as the council's well aware. When, when we find out that we've got areas where we've got bad pipe and it's city pipe, we need to go in and fix it. I, I don't think that we should be subjecting our citizens to, to sanitary sewer overflows or, or backages.
What part of Sierra Point is that?
So it's the, like, near the four-hundred, five-hundred block. That's the section where we're struggling.
Kind of where we had, uh, Slide a couple of years ago from Humboldt.
Right in the middle of town.
No, that's the six-hundred block, isn't it, sir?
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Um, sewer camera, um, our sewer camera's a little old and pokey and doesn't let us see the things we'd like to do. And unfortunately, it's just one more of those capital things we need to purchase.
Clean the lens, it's got crap all over it.
It's a dangerous thing, sir, it really is. Yeah, you couldn't pay me enough to do that job, really. That's, that's, that takes a special blade of, of worker to do that. Last item's a boat. Marina needs a boat. Current boat we have is dead in the water. It, uh, it floats, but, but that's all it does. We got to the point where we went out and spent four thousand dollars on a little rubberized dinghy so we could have something out there. But we particularly need the boat because one of the bigger items that we're going to be bringing to you in the fall is dredging. So we're going to come back to you and we're going to talk to you about having to raise the rates so we can cover the cost of bonding. And we're going to bring you a contract with the designer to do the dredging. But you can't move people's boats without a boat. And we need a work boat and we need a real work boat. Uh, we've, we've gone through and specced this. I, I think I've been really fortunate that the young man we have down there right now, it happens to be a boat driver by trade from the Coast Guard. That's what he does. And this particular boat that we specced out is a boat that he has experience with. It's very, very capable in shallow water, which is typically what you see in the marinas. We're only talking about six to eight foot of clearance. But it's also competent enough to go out to our last mile marker or even a little further out into the bay if we needed to provide assistance to someone. That is the cost of it, fully equipped. I, I do want to tell you that we are putting in for a grant and we are hoping to get a, a matching federal grant. So I hope that the cost will be half of that, that, that we'll only pay fifty percent on it, but I can't guarantee it. So I've, I've listed the full price of it in there.
From Boat and Waterways or?
I'm sorry?
Boat and Waterways, have you?
I'm, I'm not sure.
California Boat and Waterways Grant?
California Boat and Waterways Grant, is it?
No, this is a Department of Homeland Security grant.
Oh, okay.
This is a Department of Homeland Security grant, so I've, I've talked with the chief of police, and, you know, we've said, can we make a reasonable argument, uh, that we can make that boat available for, uh, for a PD response if we needed to? And sort of the, the setup that we have right now is what we were thinking, is that we would have marina staff be the boat drivers if we ever needed to, and that way the police officers don't have to be trained to operate the boat. But they would be, so the marina staff would be?
Chauffeur.
The chauffeur, yes, thank you, thank you. The chauffeur.
Um.
And there's a pretty good argument to be made for that. I mean, there's not really law enforcement close at all out there. And we ha, we have had a couple of incidents where we just don't have a boat to respond.
This is something that has come up in conversations that I've been having with some of our people out at the marina, and, um, it seems, I have no idea what, what you've specced here, but it seems like a lot of boat for what we normally need. Um, most of the marinas have a small tender type boat that can do pretty much anything out to the first mile marker with, with what we get thrown with, so, um, if we don't get matching, I'm not sure we would. And, and again, I haven't seen what you've specced out, but it seems like a lot of money for, for what we are required to have.
I, well, you know, ma'am, I'm certainly, I'm relying on the expertise of, of somebody who's, who's done this for a living, and that's his professional background. So I, I'm, I'm in no position to dis, to, to really discuss it. I mean, I've certainly gone through and over it with him, but it, it strikes me that it's, this is not an unreasonable vessel that we're looking at.
Okay.
Well, it'd be a nice boat.
It would be a nice boat. It would be a nice boat. It's a twin-engine boat. It would have the capability.
Certainly, certainly would, should have way more capabilities than we would need um, for moving people or to getting them in, inside the marina for safe harbor. Um, but again, I don't, it's not a time to talk about technic, technical issues here, but, uh, it's a lot of money and a lot of boat.
It's a lot of money, and I would suggest that it's the right amount of boat. It just, you know, we, we have sixty-foot power boats out there that we need to move. Uh, we are out there working in occasionally relatively rough sea conditions when we're trying to work on those mile markers. That is not something you want to try and do in a, in a vessel that's under twenty foot. And I don't think it's something that you really want to do with a single-engine vessel. I mean, yeah, there are people that can do it. If you, if you were just gonna have a harbor boat, yeah, you could have a smaller vessel than that, but we don't live just in the harbor, and we really do have to move, uh, vessels around. And we do it on a regular basis anyway for people. But certainly when we're doing the dredging, it's something that's gonna happen all the time. We're gonna be, we're gonna be playing, uh, where's my boat when people come back in on the weekend or so? Where did you move me to? What's slipped my head now?
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Sir?
So since you brought up dredging, where are we gonna deal with that, or how are we gonna deal with that financially? Could, uh, I know we've talked about this before, but it isn't in the list here, and then there's probably a, a reason for that, so it would be nice to air that, since there's been some boaters already expressing some concern about why is it taking us so long?
You mean if you don't get the grant? If you don't get the grant?
No, it's not, so it's, it's not, that's not a grant issue, sir, so I, what we're gonna have to do for that, is that's gonna be a-
Dredging is gonna be pretty expensive.
Call it a three million dollar project. Let's, let's just say it's three million dollars.
Oh, the dredging, yeah.
So, so if I understand correctly, Stuart's plan is that, uh, we're gonna issue bonds for that, and that when you issue bonds, you have to show that you can cover the, the cost of those bonds. Right now, our marina is twenty to twenty-five percent, by twenty to twenty-five percent, the cheapest marina around. So we are two standard deviations away from the median price, and I don't, and I, and I suspect, you know, that, that there's a couple of reasons why that hasn't been done. Some of them, we haven't been doing the dock repairs, some of them are, you know, our, our depths are starting to get a little shallow. That makes sense to me. But before we would issue those bonds, we would come to you and we would ask, uh, for a rate increase to cover those bonds. So that's how it would be covered.
Okay, so.
Am I right, Stu?
You're right, okay, thank you.
It would be in, uh, it would have to be in the marina budget, the, the debt service.
Yes.
Um, and there would be, you know, a certain amount per year to, to handle that.
Right, so you figure a three hu, a three million dollar bond would be probably somewhere in the three hun, depending how many years you want to do it. So one of the questions will be how long the dredging will last for? Because you don't, you know, again, getting back to the issue with bonds, you don't want the bonds to outlast the project.
Right.
So if you figure it's a fifteen to twenty-year dredging period of time, you're probably talking maybe somewhere between three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars a year in bond cost. Um, so what we would need to do is look at a way to have an available three to four hundred thousand dollars in revenues, and until we get that three to four hundred thousand dollars in revenues, we're not gonna be able to show a bond buyer the ability to, to pay for it. So until we get the council to approve the overall plan for the dredging and the overall plan for the financing, it doesn't, you know, it's speculative at this point as to what that will ultimately look like. So we would bring back the whole plan of what it costs to dredge, what the rate increase would be, and then what the bond rates would be, what the bond payments would be, and that would all then be as an amendment to whatever budget at that time.
It would be a significant rate increase with five hundred and whatever slips we have.
Might we get about one point four million dollars in revenues a year, and you're talking probably about a quarter of that?
Right, that's a significant amount. And I'm talking about eight hundred, seven, eight hundred dollars a year per slip on average, I mean, uh.
Right, so until, you know, until that's all approved, um, it's, we can't put, it would be, without you approving the rate increase, it would be difficult for us to put the expense in, because we can't afford the expense until we have a rate increase in. So that's why we're waiting until the overall.
So that's why it's not in this.
That's why it's not in this budget.
That's why it's not in this budget.
Right, plus we missed a window of, uh, dredging, too.
That, that was why we did not bring the rate increase and the issuance of bonds due earlier this year. We just got too close where we were, we were gonna have such a small window that it did not seem to, to be worth it to rush. Whereas if we start in October, we're pretty confident we'll be able to start at the beginning of the dredging season in June, and then be able to press forward. But, you know, when, it's always a challenge to raise rates. If you don't raise rates, you're not gonna get the dredging, and what do we do then?
What, what kind of timeframe do you think, Randy, when you'll have that before the council?
October. October this year, yes, sir.
And, and we're confident that we could get a permit and get the, um, approval for the material to take out in time for the?
That's what the consultant has told me, yes, ma'am. That's why we schedule it for that date. We had that conversation with them when we, when we realized we were gonna make the window this year.
Have, have the boaters, are they picking up on, you know, the potential rate increase, um?
I haven't tried to rub that into anyone right now, just, well, just because there's a certain reality, is that if you've got a, if you've got a deep-keeled sailboat, you have to watch the tide tables out there, because if you don't watch the tide tables, you'll be stuck. You won't be able to get out or come in. If you have a big powerboat that sits low in the water, you have to proceed very slowly when, when you don't have, uh, very much tide on you, because otherwise you will suck mud into your intake, and you'll really foul your engines. So under those conditions, and knowing that it's gonna be almost a year before I can fix that, I haven't told anybody that, well, you don't have to raise your rates, and you're gonna live with the, the tide the way it is now. So I haven't. And that's why. It just seems like that would be poking a hornet's nest for no very good reason.
And, and if you remember from last year, we, when we were talking about this project, what we had said, that we wanted to get some of the docks repaired prior to looking at the dredging project, because we wanted to show some progress of some of the issues that the boaters had talked about before we started looking at rate increases. So that's also part of the reason, I think, why we're beyond everything else. That was part of also what we had said last year.
And it's also showing the docks are in good shape before the dredging starts. That way, if
Right.
something gets damaged.
And this was, this was the conversations we were having last year when we were talking about this, that we wanted to make sure that we were, that, you know, council wants to make sure that the docks repairs were going, had been going on, or showing progress before we started the rate increase process.
Yeah, that makes sense.
It's, it's not, not to skew off too much on this, but, um, we've done some sonar readings or whatever.
Oh, yes, sure, absolutely.
And, uh, is the worst of the problem, like in Dock One Two area?
Yes.
Or is it flat?
It actually is.
It didn't seem to me it's all the way across.
That and the approach.
Yeah.
It's the, it's the, it's the approach where we've got the problems. In fact, regardless of which way you're going, it's on your starboard side. It's, if you're going out, it's on the right. If you're coming back in, it's on the right. You gotta kind of stay the middle course. And there's a couple of spots as you're going out where you've got a, you've got a couple of little humps. So what we really need is somebody with a big barge to be dragged through there and kind of level, level it out for us for a little bit, but, you know, unfortunately, people do it with their keels occasionally, and that's always a little bit of a surprise.
Yeah, but I mean, it being that, being that part, and that's probably more due to tidal action than, you know, surface dirt coming across.
Oh, I think so, absolutely. And we've had a long run. We've had over fifteen years on this dredging project. That's, there are marinas that dredge every three years, so we've had a pretty good run. It's, it's been a good thing.
Well, my question is the methodology, uh, does the whole marina need to be done?
Yes.
It does, okay.
It does, absolutely, yeah. The, the worst part is up front and at the approach, but the whole marina does need to be done.
Because I haven't had issues. I haven't been out in two years, but I did.
And we thank you for paying your slip fees, sir.
Um, on, on that note, um, it is a problem for many boaters that I know, and not even people with, with deep keels and on multiple docks, that I've been hearing about it. And I think that to look at the future boating, boaters paying the entire cost um, in their rate increase of the entire bond is going to be a little bit, um, difficult, because we have been, um, sort of robbing Peter to pay Paul by not doing the maintenance or, or allowing for the maintenance. You know, we've been making profits out of the marina, um, and repaying some of our debt, um, in lieu of doing some of the na, of the necessary maintenance. And so I think that it might be difficult to put the entire cost of the dredging on the current and future tenants, when that has been being diverted for several years, and it may need to be more flexible where it's not a hundred percent coming from rate increases.
All right, ma'am, we'll take that on board. We'll, we'll consider that once we bring it to you.
Before you do, Stuart, I, I'd like to hear your comment on that.
Uh, yeah, this, as we talked about at the very beginning of the budget process, that this is an enterprise fund. Normally, you would anticipate enterprise funds to be self-funding. You know, at one point in time, we were using, uh, more, we combined the marina and the Parks and Recreation Department into a single fund. Um, so there was some money that was being put aside, that was being used from the marina to pay for Parks and Recreation programs. Um, that has been split since then. So there is, you know, we, but we've never really gone through and used marina money for depreciation. So one of the challenges that we had up until the year two thousand and five, two thousand and two, when we refunded the original RDA debt, was any excess money from the marina was supposed to be used to pay for bond payments. So we weren't really running excess revenues up until that point in time when we refinanced the debt, because anything we didn't run should have been used to pay off the RDA debt. Uh, so at, in two thousand and two, we then combined, based on council direction, we combined the Parks and Recreation Department and the marina as more of the recreational opportunities. And, yeah, the marina runs and ran above operational numbers, and then the Recreation Department ran below, but if you remember that RDA debt is being paid for by, um, general, by the taxpayers. And I think what the city council was saying at that point in time, that the two million dollar pay, debt payment paying for by RDA and therefore taxpayers was a benefit to the marina, um, people, that they did not have to pay for the beginning cost of the marina. And so I think council said that, recognizing that, then it was, it made sense to use some of the money, because it wasn't up to the two million dollar payment number, from the marina to pay for other services within the city. So it's a, it's a question of how do you want to look at that, and, you know, from past issues? And then going forward, the question is, how do we best structure a bond, a debt payment to pay for a necessary repair, and who should be paying for it? So when you pay for it out of future revenue, you're paying, the people who are actually getting the benefit, as we talked about before, are paying for that. And still, none of the, none of the marina residents or boat owners are paying for the original cost of the marina. Because if we were to try to put a two million dollar bond payment on the boat owners, that would not be a twenty-five percent increase. It would be a hundred and twenty-five, hundred and fifty percent increase on the marina users. So it's a question, I mean, it's a, it's, you get back into that philosophical question that, you know, we've had before, as to how do you really pay for, um, services? How do you really pay for, um, future improvements? And, you know, there's no one right answer. And it's just trying to piece everything together as to what the city council considers, what the important issues are today that we want to pay for, and what are the important issues going forward that we want to pay for? And how do we make all that work? It's back to the question that, you know, Cliff and I were discussing Monday night. I'm not gonna get into it again, but on that priority-based budgeting kinds of questions, as to, you know, what are, what is important for the city to do, and how do we pay for everything that we need to get done? So that would be my response. Another non-response to your question, Clark, I'm working, I'm working hard on these.
Well, it's not, it's not a non-response, I don't think. It's just, you know, kind of helps with background and educational thing, too, you know, and just how all this falls, and so, I mean, it's good information, really.
Yeah, just, uh, speaking of the historical, I'm, I mean, the, the original conception way back in the, in the seventies, and the reason that the cost of the marina was shared by all the property owners current and presumably forthcoming, and all the buildings that were gonna prop up all over Sierra Point would still have been popped up, but, uh, the idea was that by having a marina there, it gave the Sausalito feel, and that would enhance the whole area. Uh, and it would make it a more desirable place to, to work, and people could, you know, rent the facilities there at, at a much higher level, or at a level that certainly was, was better than some other places, because this had a, you know, wonderful ambiance of the, of the marina and, and the, and the quote Sausalito feel. That phrase was used over and over again. And so that's why the expense was shared throughout the whole Sierra Point. I mean, there was a philosophical decision made that we're, one of the reasons we're doing this is to enhance the development of the entire Sierra Point area. And that's why the, all the property owners were expected to participate in that. So there was a deliberate decision to do that, and that was the reason why.
And South Beach Harbor in San Francisco was built with, uh, California Boat and Waterways, uh, Grant, from what I understand, so that's something that we can apply for, for the dredging, i- i- is a possibility. I'm just saying, you know.
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that, sir.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just throwing an idea out there.
Certainly, as we go forward with this, we're gonna look for other funding opportunities, absolutely.
I mean, this is in, in response to, to Terry's concern, too, you know, about, you know, all of a sudden, people getting, you know, this. You know, because we are gonna, we are gonna lose people, no doubt, you know, that you're paying for it and don't, you know, there's gonna be somewhat, and, and I won't predict how big, but there'll be somewhat of an exodus once, you know, I mean, because.
Although it'd be an exodus just because we are dredging, just because it's a little bit of-
That's a significant bump, you know.
Ma'am, you're right. You're right, but I think we're still gonna be below the average.
Yeah.
And I, and quite frankly, and we're gonna have an above-average marina.
Yeah.
I, I think we've got a good marina down there. We are working on having the right environment. It doesn't really faze anybody that we don't have a fuel station, because they can just motor across and, and go to Oyster Cove and pick it up. I think people would probably like to see maybe one or two amenities, but
Yes.
they're pretty simple, you know, you had, you had a hot dog stand every now and then. I think for the most part, it'd be good, and the yacht club seems to take care of that on a pretty regular basis. People like that marina. It's quite peaceful, and that's what they like about it, and quite frankly, people like that we're doing the dock improvements, but most people are like, wow, you know, I was, the other marina was, that was way worse than this, and they weren't doing anything about it. So we, we do a pretty decent job down there.
We've got new restaurants across the board.
Looking good, yeah, it's, it's, it's a decent marina.
Yeah, you know, I, I like the strategy that you guys have put forth. I think, um, you know, letting the boaters know that we are listening to them, we're making these improvements. Sure, they're not gonna like, uh, when- Sure, they're not gonna like when the rates go up, but it's for a reason. And, and, you know, people will, will pay if they feel like they're getting something in return.
I mean, I get a lot of comments, and most people who, you know, use their boats a lot are willing to have increased costs for better access and better docks. Not to say that everyone is of that ilk, but we have a really good feeling down at this marina, and we have a good community. And I think that's a really important thing to have.
Excellent. Thank you. Because we're working really hard at that, man. We really are. We're really trying to make sure that, you know, it's probably in, over the last year or so, we've, we've suggested to a number of people that maybe they would be happier at other marinas. Because they just weren't a good fit at our marina. You know, some of the, the way the people were conducting themselves, were not conducive to having what, what I always refer to it as a family environment. I always say, you know what, somebody ought to feel comfortable bringing his family down here and just sitting on his boat any day of the week, any weekend, and just having a little barbecue. And there shouldn't be, you know, loud, blurring music going on. There shouldn't be inappropriate language. There shouldn't be stuff strewn on the docks. It should be, it should feel like a nice, safe environment. It doesn't mean it's only catering to families, but it just, that's kind of the standard we're trying to set, and we work real hard at that. We, we try to encourage the boaters to, to understand that, that this is the type of environment we want. If you want to party and do that all night long, well, probably got to go somewhere else.
Go to Oyster Point.
Short haul. If you can make it, unlike that current railboat that didn't quite make it all the way over there. Well, I'm on a slide, so I'm happy to take whatever questions you have, or otherwise, I'm happy to say good evening.
Questions? Anybody want to start? Lloyd?
Sure. So going back to the, um, some of the capital.
Wendy, please.
Capital projects, you had mentioned with the, the gateway entrance project, that that was in here. Where is that? And we, we weren't here when we, on Monday. I think we talked about that coming, that that was not in the budget. My understanding was that it would come out of the special projects under city council.
So that's not in one of the departments?
Right, right. I mean, there's not a specific project, but we did talk about it, that it would be part of that, that one hundred thousand dollars that the budget subcommittee put aside for one-time projects.
Okay. So it's not within Public Works, then?
It's not assigned to a department yet.
Okay.
So we would do it. We would oversee it.
That's why you're discussing it. Okay, got it.
You just got to figure out what it is.
We're getting, we're pretty close on that. I think we're pretty close on that, and I, the young lady who's doing the, the design did send me something last week. I just haven't had a chance to get to it with just getting back.
Okay. I don't have any other questions at this point.
Ray?
So are you just talking about capital projects now, or are you gonna go on to talk about all your other stuff?
I, my, my understanding was this was it. This is the extent of what we're going to do for the presentation.
We have questions in the.
In the meat of it, sir.
Departmental budget proposal, then you're not going to say anymore, so it would be appropriate.
Now, yes, sir. Now would be, now would be the right time.
Because I just have things that I'm curious about.
Okay, sure.
I know you know the answer.
Well, I, I hope I have the same level of answers as you have confidence in me, sir.
Yeah, no, I know. I'm sure you do. I just, a couple of things, I'm, you know, usually when I see changes or big increases, and I'm just sort of curious as to why.
Sure.
So I'll just.
Okay.
So like on, I'm starting on page one seventeen.
Okay.
I just noticed that there was a significant increase in, in the weed abatement and debris removal. I was wondering, what do you think is going to create that?
Well, what we're finding is that that's the actual expense that, so the weed abatement and removal is something that we go through, and we put request for quotations at every year. So that's what it's turned out to be the actual cost.
So we've just been underpricing it in.
That's correct. That's correct. We've just been underpricing it. So that's the one you're talking about where we went up from ten thousand to twenty-seven thousand on the weed abatement. Yes, sir.
And, and was that on just our own structures and grounds?
Public right-of-way, yes, ma'am. So I get the same notice that every citizen gets every year from the North County Fire Authority. I get a lot of them too, because of all the properties we have, so we have quite a list.
If, if I may just piggyback on that. So part of our franchise agreement, aren't we going to have something that's built in to that agreement where they're going to be collecting debris in, in the public right-of-way on, on our roads?
That is, but it wouldn't be part of the weed abatement, sir. So they still do, they're gonna be, we're asking them to do. Not weed abatement.
But it's got weed abatement and debris removal.
Yes, but it's more weed abatement. It's not, it's not, it's not the, so part of the debris removal that we've been doing is on a number of streets. Scavengers have been going through on a monthly basis now with a crew of three to five people and picking up litter. So that's the type of debris removal that's going to be happening under the franchise.
Okay, so this debris removal is, is just like taking the trees, branches, and then pulling them away?
It's mostly wood. It's fibrous-type stuff, as opposed to litter.
Got it, okay.
Right, Ray?
Okay, so then on page one eighteen, I'm just trying to figure out where things are at. This, this is where the retaining wall in Center New Avenue is.
One nineteen?
One eighteen.
One eighteen, the page book.
But we're also going to be doing that extensive slope repair on Bay Shore Boulevard by Guadalupe Canyon Parkway.
That's not in there because we haven't brought that back to you yet. We haven't, I've just got the, the plans on that, and I've got the estimates. And before I bring that back to you, I need to have a conversation with the adjoining property owner so we can ascertain the cost split. So you're correct, that is not in here.
Okay, so will that be in addition to?
It'll be a supplemental, yes, sir, as we bring it to you. That's correct.
And what is, what were our anticipated costs on that?
The budget number that I told you is two twenty-five. And our share will actually be a little bit less than that. I think we're going to be more in the one fifty, one seventy-five range.
Property owners' UPC?
Yes, sir. It's half their slope. They should get half the joy.
They should get half the joy.
Seems reasonable.
Seems reasonable to me.
So Stuart, had you taken that into account when we get into the overall figures?
No, since we don't have it in the budget, it's not taken into account. If you would like, we can add that as a placeholder, you know, maybe put, you know, two hundred as a placeholder.
Because that seems like a pretty substantial amount that we ought to be aware of.
Where would you put it? Ground, maybe?
Forty-two streets, since it's the public right-of-way. That's, that would be my inclination, sir. But it's enough money that I'd probably just put it in CIP.
Yeah, I would say put it in.
Capital. Whichever way Council Stu is most comfortable.
Right. It, it is an improvement.
It, it is an improvement.
Yeah, so capital.
What do they call that, serious money? Anything over a hundred thousand?
How many zeros starts to be serious?
Real money?
Yeah.
You know, I think part of it is going to be, you know, if there's other, if we can find different funding for it as well. You know, and I think as we bring that project back, you know, we'll look at our, you know, where we are in capital project money. It might come out of four hundred. We'll see how the business license is doing. I think last year, I'm going to look to Betsy. We had about three fifty to four hundred thousand in business license money for capital projects. Right. So this year, so in thirteen, fourteen, we had about three to four hundred thousand dollars in business license going into capital. Next, you know, we would assume we're going to be somewhere in the same range next year. And I budgeted three hundred, so we might be a little bit higher than that next year. So we might want to look at what we have available in capital projects. And it might be better, you know, we can budget it for in capital projects. We can see, you know, where we are on that. And then as we come closer to having the project be completed, to see specifically, you know, what money is available from there, and if there's other places we can cobble funding from. So that's probably where we would, you know, where I'd suggest moving at this point in time.
A lot of the questions that I had written to myself that I wanted to fire about, you answered when we talked about the capital projects because they are incorporated throughout. And so I had all these questions, and they're all combined in one place, and took care of it.
Good, I'm glad, sir.
But I have a few other minor things, just out of curiosity. Page one thirty-six.
One thirty-six it is, then.
I'm looking at gopher and pest control.
Yes.
And I noticed that pest control goes to zero, so I'm wondering what the explanation for that is.
This is, which line is it?
Sierra Point Landscape and Land.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm on page one thirty-six, sir, but we're.
No, one thirty-five.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry. I heard you one thirty-five.
I read that too.
One thirty-six.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So the pest control. Stumped me. It's a great question. But I do not know what my staff did there.
It could have been a typing thing. Let me go look. I'll be back.
Went into tree trimmings.
Okay, while you're looking that up, I have another question on page.
No, it was zero. So you're okay. It was zero. Yeah, it was zero. I just don't have the explanation in hand. I'm sorry. I'll, I'll get it to you, sir.
Okay, so now I'm looking at GBMID on page, I'll read it right this time. Had my glasses misfocused, sorry.
I'm having the same problem with transitionals, so.
On page one forty-four, I'm looking at, again, the maintenance instructors and the tree replacement. And it only has a thousand dollars. And the reason that I'm concerned about that is that we all know that in GBMID, a lot of the trees are dying because of the bark beetle disease.
Right.
Now, of course, many of them are in private property, but on the other hand, there, a lot of the absentee landlords don't seem to care very much about that. And we are, in effect, I believe the council is the GBMID Association.
You are, yes, sir.
Uh, and we could do something about, you know, tree replacement and making sure that we maintain the, you know, the tree beauty. I mean, that's one of the beautiful things originally about the Crocker Park was, was all the trees and the grass and so forth. And, and so there's not, there doesn't seem to be a deliberate program of replacing the trees all over. I'm not just talking about, you know, city, but also the ones on private property. And I'm wondering if we ought to think about doing that. Doesn't, you know, we're talking about the, you know, enhancing the Crocker Park, and that's what the TAP was all about, that part of enhancing that area is the maintenance of the foliage and the trees and so forth. And it would seem to me that we ought to have a program to address that issue, and that's going to cost some money. I don't know how we might be able to raise that money, and the association has means to do that, I guess, but that's another conversation. But I do think that we need to really address the, you know, the replacement of all those trees that are dying and being, you know, cut and, and not really replaced. And it's going to really cut into the, you know, the aesthetics of, of the park.
So you, you caught me with three questions, sir, sir. The first one was, you know, the amount of money that we have in there for tree trimming and maintenance. And you caught me on the opposite end of the question, because we had never had money in there in GBMID before that. This is the first time we've added in, so you sort of asked in the opposite, like, maybe there would be more. We think that's enough for the limited amount of maintenance we do. I, I think I'm gonna have to sit down and really figure out what sort of authorities we actually have in there. I don't know where, how much authority we have onto the private property, but I think in.
I think we have got a bit, actually, because it is the special district legislation that, that needs.
I mean, just like, yeah. To let you know, Open Space and Ecology Committee is trying to work, you know, they're, they're trying to work through a plan for the Crocker Industrial Park when it comes to tree replacement because they recognize the same issue that you recognize. And I, if you've been watching their committee meetings, you've heard them talking about it and trying to figure out, you know, and we went out and we got, we solicited bids from different companies as to what the overall cost was. We were then going to, you know, come back to council with some kind of plan, working with Randy and his staff as to how do we go about making this happen. And some of the things maybe is some of the rules we have about how quickly you need to replace a tree once you've taken it down. And then, of course, Open Space and Ecology Committee has had this conversation, and would like to continue the conversation with Public Works, is what kinds of trees do you replace it with? Because you've got a whole big issue with that, is do you replace it with trees of similar style? Or do you, as I've been talking to them, do you replace them with trees that are going to survive thirty to forty years down the road as we see some of the climate change happen? So, I mean, I think Open Space and Ecology Committee is, has this awareness, and I think when they have a plan, they're going to talk with Public Works and then bring a overall plan as to, you know, what it might cost and how to fund it back to the city council. So that's part of the process going on.
And I think the additional wrinkle that I'm going to add into that is, one of the things that we need to think about is the whole concept we have for that plan development out there, about how it's a very manicured landscaped lawn.
Right.
And is that really the most prudent environment for us to have as we go into climate change? As we go into drought? And, and maybe what we ought to start doing is replacing some of that lawn as we move along and replace it with native plants, things that are in fact drought resistant. And if we're going to go down there, does that require, I'm sorry?
Something like across the street or.
Exactly. And, and if you're going to do that, what sort of trees makes sense with that? Because now you're going to create a whole new environment, and you would want them to work together. You wouldn't want them competing for each other. You want trees that can live in that environment, that are very low water type environment. So it, it's an interesting conversation. It's certainly stuff that, you know, obviously, Open Space has been working on, at the replacement of the, of the lawns. Things the water departments have been talking about.
Some kind of placeholder in the budget here, even if it's just a, you know, conceptual plan as to how to approach this whole issue.
Sure, I don't, I don't know if we want to put it in here, if we want to.
I really think, you know, as Open Space and Ecology is aware of, and, you know, Ellen Corr, you know, quite a few years ago, you know, had a, you know, she paid for specialists to come in and look at the whole bark beetle situation.
Right.
She informed all the property owners, and of course, so many of them at that time anywhere, or, you know, in Denver or Chicago, or.
Right.
They didn't give a damn, you know, and, and, well, they were, all they were concerned about is how much rent can they get next month, you know? So, but, but the GBMID does have, I think, some kind of responsibility generally for the, you know, the, the whole park ambiance and its quality of landscaping and so forth. So I would hope that we would, you know, really address it and use whatever recommendations.
The city attorney owes us an analysis on that.
That's right. You're right about that. Right, that's what I was going to suggest we.
If he ever moved it up from when we did his evaluation, it's now moved back up on the list, so that should be part of the whole thing, yeah.
I definitely say we give it to David since he's not here. It's a great idea.
Since David's not here, so.
But I do think we ought to, you know, start thinking about it and maybe at least put the placeholder, you know, conceptual plan for addressing the landscaping issues in the Crocker Park, something like that.
Sure, agreed.
And to piggyback on that, I, I know I've talked with, I think Stuart, about this, about, you know, whether on city properties, we have irrigation that has the technology that, you know, responds to weather so that we're not watering unnecessarily. I know that's something we installed recently through the HOAs up at the ridge, and it saves a lot of money on water. So I, I would hope that we could include that in any conceptual plan as well.
Back to you, sir.
Okay, now I'm, my glasses, on page one forty-eight. Okay, I think I've got it right this time. Okay, now we're in.
Dips.
PDES.
Oh, my favorite topic. This is, this is just lovely.
You know, I had some specific questions about some of the pretty big amounts in here.
There really are. This is where you're going to find the biggest changes.
Yeah, I noticed that. And, and of course, the follow-up after talking about the specific things is, so, you know, the whole two eighteen set of issues.
Yes, exactly.
But anyway, on, I noticed, you know, the, the storm drain trash capture devices.
Exactly.
Thirty thousand dollars.
Yep.
And then enhanced street sweeping.
Hundred grand.
Thousand dollars.
Yep.
And the storm drain trash capture, fifty thousand. I mean, that's a lot of dough.
Adds up to a hundred and eighty grand.
Yeah.
Sir.
So, um, why don't you just, for general, explain, you know, why we have to do that? Then, so people understand that we're just not, you know, spending money just for the hell of it.
Sure.
And what are we going to try to do to finance it?
Sure, so let me give you just kind of a thumbnail sketch on that, because the intent that we've always had was that when we brought the final franchise agreement with you, was to bring you a rather lengthy, and I hope not too boring, explanation about how many years we've been working on the municipal regional permit, how we, how we determined what sort of trash zones we had out here, what the level of trash was, how we had to divide those up into trash management areas, and what the final game plan was in doing that. So effectively, what it comes down to is this. We are regulated by the Regional Water Quality Control Board of San Francisco Bay, so that's Region Two. They, we have a municipal regional permit, and we have a requirement by 2020, originally at a. They, we have a municipal regional permit, and we have a requirement by 2020, originally the requirement said, zero litter, zero litter, nobody could define what that meant, so after much negotiation, we've defined that to say no visible impact because of litter. So, what we've been doing as we work through the franchise with Scavenger and with Recology is to put requirements in there in one way or another that make the solid waste hauler really responsible for all of the solid waste, because they haven't been. You know, we've just, cities eaten it up out of the general fund, and really, it's people that generate trash at their homes, at their businesses, that it's getting away from them. In some cases, it's because you have debris bins that are left open, in some cases, it's because people are throwing stuff out, in some cases, it's because trash cans are not being emptied. So, we're anticipating that there are a number of things that the hauler will have to do under the contract, and Mr. Lance talked about one of them, he talked about, you know, the monthly walkthroughs that they do. We're also going to require them in that contract to be responsible for picking up all the trash cans in the city, and for refurnishing the lemons, and doing that so that they don't overflow. They're, they're the solid waste hauler, this is what we think they should be doing. But in addition to that, to meet the permit requirements, we are going to have to have significant increases in street sweeping, to the tune of about a hundred grand a year. And some of that is really, as we talk with South San Francisco, and it's most likely that we are going to continue our agreement with them, and they're going to be the agency that provides its services, we're going to go out and buy, they're going to have to go out and buy a special piece of equipment to do our streets, because we recognize that our streets are very steep, and you just, you're not going to be able to put no parking zones on ninety percent of the streets in town. Where the heck are they going to go, you know, and, because, well, you might say, well, we could just have them not park on Humboldt, and we'll just do Humboldt Street, well, that sounds like a good idea, but you can't get a street sweeping company to say, well, I'll drive down to Brisbane and do one street. That just, it just doesn't happen, so what we're going to end up getting is a small piece of equipment that's got a little wand on it that you can reach out. You've probably seen something very similar to what we're talking about, if you've, I know, I see it a lot on Grand Avenue down in South San Francisco, where it's kind of, it's a Mad Vac is what they call it, so he drives on, it looks like a tiny little golf cart, and he's got this big, you know, it looks like a six-inch hose, and he's got a wand he can reach out, because that's what we need, I mean, that's the only way you're going to get to the curb. We're not going to get people to move. Maybe on San Bruno Avenue, it might be feasible to have no parking, so that we can really get to the curb. On Visitation Avenue, we already have it posted, and we are reinforcing there, that's fine, but it just doesn't work in central Brisbane, it just doesn't work here, so that's going to happen. The trash capture devices, what we're talking about there is that the board is really going to the point where they want to see as much as they can a full capture trash device. So, that's installing a device inside your storm drain catch basins that doesn't allow anything beyond, I don't remember what the micron limit is, to go through it. They are not that expensive, you know, depending upon your size, there may be a couple grand apiece, but when you've got a hundred of them that you've got to install over a five-year period, it starts to add up. And then, you have to maintain them.
Maintain them.
You've got to go out there twice a year and maintain them, because you can't just let them fill up.
Right.
So, that's where the costs start to come in, and that's why we're doing what it is that we're doing. And again, all of these costs presume that that revenue will be sourced from the franchise agreement.
So, the last part of my question was about the two eighteen?
So, right, so the two eighteen, we will have to do that like we do with any fee that we impose, with the property-related type fee that we do, so we will have to bring that forward when we bring the franchise fee increase.
So, but there was this conversation about doing it countywide, this is where does that sit?
Oh, okay, yes sir, oh, thank, I'm sorry, I, there's a lot of two eighteens involved in this. Certainly, we'll have to do the one eighteen for our franchise and our fee increase. There is another two eighteen that is looking at imposing fees, requesting fees. That is really not going to be supplementing this, that is going to be taking care of the other requirements that we have on there, the pending requirements, the regional permit, the way it's established right now has no less than fifteen chapters. And talking about trash, what we're doing in here is just one of the chapters, it's just C-ten. There's a bunch others that we have to deal with, the biggest one that's going to be expensive is going to be dealing with PCBs, going to be dealing with legacy PCBs and how we get rid of those. So, that's primarily, when that county plan comes up, that's how we're going to do that. That, it's actually been on hold for a little bit, because one of the things we've been struggling with is getting the legislation passed to make it crystal clear that C-CAG has the authority as an entity to go out and impose those fees. Did I get it that time, sir? Got the second part of it?
But we don't know where that is legislatively.
I don't know the latest update, I don't know which committee it's before or not. Mr. Mullin was sponsoring the bill for it.
Mullin was.
Yes.
It wasn't clear-cut where it was the last C-CAG meeting, and we have another meeting tomorrow, and I'm sure we'll probably get an update. We usually get a monthly update on, on where that authorization is, and then where their surveys are on what, how much money they anticipate they could ask voters for, and what timing they're going to be asking voters if we do it at a countywide level.
Matt does the update, right?
Yes, sir, Mr. Fabry, right.
Yeah, you can just call him too, huh? Email it to us.
Another good employee stolen by others.
Ready? Okay, those are my questions. Okay, that's it, Terry?
Um, on page one nineteen. Let's get back to it. Our utilities went down tremendously, and I'm wondering what we did right?
I think primarily what we did right was just get a better handle on the accounting for it, is all. That's just reflecting that, that our actual costs are lower than what we budgeted, that's all.
So, that's nothing to do with putting an LED street light, sir?
No, ma'am, actually, if you look at the electricity bills, as a result of that, they're a little higher, because part of what we're doing right now in the electricity bills is we're paying back the cost of doing that on bill financing, so in some of those cases, some of our electricity costs look higher. This is, this is just, that is just a reflection of what we do, every year as we go through, sometimes you're going to see changes in the budget, and it has absolutely nothing to do with anything we've done right, wrong, or indifferent, it's just that we've got different people looking at it, and we've refined the costs, and we're capturing them in a different way, so we understand what we really need there. So, we're trying to really make the budget better every year, it is a planning tool, and it's supposed to be flexible, but to the extent that we can without killing ourselves counting beans, we try to make sure that we've got a handle within a couple thousand dollars of what every item's going to be. It gives us enough leeway to move things around between accounts within a department, but not, you know, make it so over burdensome that that's all we're doing is tracking it.
And some of this in the budget, part of the reason it's, it's difficult is we're not looking at your budget with the actuals that, you know, preceded, it was just budgets across the board instead of actuals, so...
We do have actual expenditures on the main page, don't we, ma'am?
So, I think on the main page...
On page one fifteen would show the actuals that we had through two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen.
Right, yeah.
So, I mean, the actuals for the utilities, I mean, there has been a slight trend downward over the time.
Right.
But Randy is right, if you turn to page, um, page one oh nine, which is the overall Public Works Department, you know, their utilities are, you know, they're projecting slightly higher than it's been. The actual in twelve thirteen was three eighty-three, they're projecting something around four seventeen this year for the overall department. And a lot of the challenges are that this fiscal year, if you remember, we used to have a team leader who was in charge of a lot of these budgets, and was, you know, presenting them, giving them to Randy, Randy was reviewing them. This year, there's a new team leader, so new eyes have been put on it, and also, there is another intermediary, we've got a senior civil engineer who's also reviewing these kinds of costs, and making sure that they can track all of their costs to where the, you know, a better way of where they're supposed to be. Um, you know, there were some, you know, in the previous years, I think, you know, the, we've always worked towards bottom-line numbers for a department, and we're always concerned that is a department within the right bottom line? Um, so I think the previous team leader would look at bottom lines and say, as long as we're good bottom lines throughout the department, we're okay, and I think now what the new team leader and the new civil, senior civil engineer looking at it says, is this the right place to be charging these items? And it's always better to get things better charged, so that way, you, when US councils start making those policy decisions, can say, yeah, you know, that makes more sense to me, gets back to what, you know, Ray has been talking about, what Cliff has been talking about, was getting closer to program-based budgeting. And, you know, and for all of our departments, Public Works, other than Parks and Recreation now, has had the best program-based budgeting, because they break out their department in so many various ways. So, it's really, if you look at page one oh nine, you get a better sense of overall how the department is doing on the budget.
Thank you.
Quick quibble on one oh nine, you got a formatting error on that one. Their column is not spread out enough or something in your spreadsheet. Fourth column from the left says number ref.
Oh, yeah, under total salaries, too.
Yeah, it's under actual expended.
Yeah, we didn't want to tell you.
No, it formats all the way through, I mean, if you look at it...
Is it number or hashtags?
It's, it's, it's number ref, that means there's another one that's picking it up that's number ref.
Yeah.
Someplace else.
It's formatting issues, something, uh...
Right.
Go ahead, Terry.
I don't have any questions right now.
Oh, that's it?
Yep.
Okay, Cliff?
I don't have any questions, it was a very good presentation, Randy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, sir.
You probably want to go home.
Hey!
I haven't been tracking the clock time, sir, so I'm not sure, the last two nights have been...
That's not fair, you got off vacation, no. Got to torture you, man, no. Not very good.
What time is it, Alan, Brussels? Nine hours later.
Clay, anything to punish him about? No.
I don't think it's nice to death, Paul.
Just to let you know, one of the issues that Randy didn't bring up, that we, that you talked about at the last budget meeting, was the pool projects, and one of the things that I did, you know, going back and looking at the documents that the department gave me, they gave me a budget of eighty-five hundred dollars to do the plans and specifications for a lot of the pool work, that you were wondering who would be the expert in overseeing it, so I need to add back eighty-five hundred dollars within the pool budget to cover the plans and specifications for that, and that will show up on your Resolution A, or Exhibit A on the resolution next week. And at the end of the meeting, I want to talk a little bit about the resolution for next week.
Okay, thank you. Chief?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members, we're at the Police Department Budget. So, we will start with the first slide, this one may be a little confusing. When it talks about non-p patrol, it's focusing on those individuals that are not, not in the patrol services, which would be our community service officer, our records division, or records analyst, and the administration, which is Commander Meisner and myself. So, these are just some of the items that, some of the things that are done, professional research, and I apologize, Councilmember O'Connell, the percentages are not there. COP activity, which is community-oriented policing activity, vehicle maintenance, traffic enforcement, parking, abandoned vehicles, evidence processing, court-related duties, public inquiries. And those, a lot of those are kind of inner, they're, they're, they interact on both with our community service officer and records. Um, under, I have some percentages, if Councilmember O'Connell would like more percentage-wise. What I did originally was break it down, and I have those written down, so those aren't actually going to be up there. But under records, we have our records analyst who spends thirty percent of her time doing data entry. She spends twenty percent of her time doing payables, public inquiries, which is dealing with the front counter and those individuals coming in, is about fifteen percent of her time. Off official reports and statistics, which are reports that go to the Department of Justice, she spends about twenty percent of her time, and fifteen percent of her time is just on miscellaneous administrative duties. As you're aware, we, we eliminated the administrative assistant position when our secretary retired Maggie, and we distributed those responsibilities amongst Commander Meisner and myself, and our records analyst also took on some of those responsibilities. So, under our community service officer, if those of you have seen Morgan with the light blue uniform out on, out on the streets, she does a lot of, she does a lot more than we give her credit for. She does court, she does all our court-related duties, and those are about ten percent of her time. Evidence processing is about thirty percent of her time, parking and abandoned vehicles runs about twenty percent of her time. Traffic enforcement, if we have a major collision out on the roadway, she'll come out and do some traffic enforcement. About five percent of her time, vehicle maintenance is dealing with all the issues with, that come up with our, our patrol vehicles, is twenty percent of her time. She does community-oriented policing activities, which is installing car seats, reading to the children of the libraries, attending a lot of our, of our events, that's about five percent of her time, and then she does other miscellaneous duties as things come up. And under administration, it falls under myself and Commander Meisner, and we deal with about personnel matters, which is about five percent, meetings, both internal and external, general public meetings and inquiries and complaints, report review, general staff and supervision is about ten percent, budgeting and purchasing is about five percent, professional research, about ten percent, staff reports and official correspondence is about fifteen percent, and other administrative duties, which is dealing with the telephone and building security and any other, and IT and any other things that come up. And again, I can give you percentages, but all of that is, can change on a daily basis, because we, it just depends on what comes, comes through the day on a daily basis. So, the next slide is how we broke down the department, patrol services. And I have day shift, because you'll see with the next slide on night shift, it's completely different. So, on patrol, on a day shift, they spend, officers will spend about forty percent of their time writing reports, and what, what that falls under is investigations. So, they'll be doing, as you, I think Mayor Councilmember, or Mayor Clark Conway had mentioned about day shift, during the day, we have about three times the, the population that we do during the night of our residents, because we have all the businesses open. So, as you can imagine, the businesses are calling in fraud or embezzlement cases, so forty percent of the officer's time is actually taking investigations and writing their reports. The other thirty percent is under proactive policing, which is traffic enforcement, parking enforcement, DUI enforcement, directed patrol, which is just driving around, special assignments, which encompass GTF, Human Trafficking Task Force, and Avoid the Twenty-three and any other events that we, that we work collaboratively with other agencies in the county. And then under, the other thirty percent is reactive, so those are basically answering calls for service. Um, they get a call for service, officer responds, medical calls, those would be crimes in progress, traffic accidents, hazardous material response, and traffic control incidents. And that's your day shift patrol, and again, numbers can change drastically depending if they're taking a big investigation. It could be a hundred percent of their time is spent inside writing investigation. So, we have nighttime patrol, and that's broken down, as you can see the difference. Their report writing drops tremendously, because now we're just dealing with the, our own residential population, which at night, most of the, half of the shift, the, most of the residents are sleeping. So, you have about fifteen percent of your investigations on night shift, and then you have your reactive patrol, which is about twenty percent, because our calls for service will drop during the night shift. And then our proactive patrol, and that's officers going out there, driving around, looking for what doesn't belong, something that is out of, out of, out of the normal. So, you could see the difference in, in the three. The new items in the budget for fiscal year fourteen fifteen is the two new officers and update technology. I'll talk a little bit about the two new officers, as you remember, you graciously granted us the two positions in fiscal year thirteen fourteen. We did fill both of those positions, we currently have one officer who's been on his own for the last three weeks, and has been a great asset to the department and to the community. And the second position, after seven weeks in the field training program, the officer, the trainee, felt that law enforcement was probably not the best profession for him, so he resigned. Subsequently, during the same fiscal year, we had one of our tenure officers, who's been with us ten years, leave our department and go on to another agency. So, we're back down to two positions that are open in this fiscal year, and we are asking for two new officers in fiscal year fourteen fifteen. We recently did a recruitment about two weeks ago, and we were able to get some very good candidates. We were very lucky, I think timing is everything. Everyone in the county is, is hiring, so we're competing with everybody else in the county, so the pool is getting smaller and smaller, but we were able to, to really identify seven good candidates. We started the background process, I'm currently five, and I say five because we have another officer who's currently looking at leaving, she has some personal family matters and wants to live, work closer to home and have a more stable schedule for her and her family life. The other item is the update in technology. As Clay and Stuart both discussed in their budget overview, the need for, this year being the need for some of the departments to kind of catch up on some areas, for us, technology needed to get done immediately, only because we will be taking on that new records management system, and this, in the summertime, we'll be going live. So, we needed to get an analysis and evaluation of where our IT system was. So we needed to get an analysis and evaluation of where our IT system was and our infrastructure with our IT to make sure that it was up and current to be able to take on this new records management system. And during that time, we were able to now currently be up, up and running and current. And during that evaluation, we realized that there was a real need to have an IT maintenance contract that will allow us to be monitored, our IT system, to be monitored twenty-four seven because we do run twenty-four seven. So we need to make sure that there's no, there's no area for the system to go down. A lot of the new changes in the county are becoming paperless, and it's all electronic from the new jail management system to, in the future, going with the district attorney's office and prosecuting cases or submitting cases to the district attorney's office electronically as well. So as you could see, there's a real, a real need to make sure that the police department's computer system stays up and running twenty-four seven. And those are, that's the conclusion of my budget overview. Councilmembers, have any questions?
Questions? Cliff, I want to start with you. Do you have any questions?
You know, I, I do not. You know, thank you, Lisa. I mean, you guys do a great job. You know, I know that you've been without the two officers for a while. Having the two new officers will help with things like overtime and being able to get back into the community the way that I think the community hopes that, you know, some of the things that, that we've had in the past. One of the things that, that, you know, that we did let go, and I do have a question about is, you know, you know, having that connection with the schools. Where are we with that? I mean, do you, do you foresee that, that coming back into your budget sometime in the future?
We, when we no longer had the school resource officer position, because that was a grant that, that the state had given us, we kept the position as a school liaison. So we did have an officer that stayed on as a school liaison. Unfortunately, it was the officer that did leave our city to Hillsborough Police Department Officer Haviana. So we hope that once we get our staffing levels back up to where we need to be as part of, is, is to get reconnected with the schools, absolutely.
All right. Okay, thanks.
Terry?
I know when we've been down the officers in our, the two thousand thirteen, fourteen budget for overtime, we have one hundred and twenty thousand listed. I'm assuming we exceeded last year's budget in overtime, but I don't have a figure for that or approximation. Do you have any ideas?
I think I do have the last, Bob, I'll call you up here because my.
Just to guess.
My vision at night. I know this was, I know, I'm getting close.
Well, right now.
We were, Bob and I were just discussing that the other day when we had our, our most recent usage, budget usage numbers.
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is the latest one or not, but if I remember correctly, we were about thirty thousand dollars over budget, over, in our overtime budget. However, we've saved quite a bit on the other end by having the open position. So I think at the end of the day, you're, there's going to be a cost savings there. So we do expect overtime this month, again, to continue probably ten, fifteen thousand dollar range. But again, if you equal out all the numbers from our vacancies against overtime, we're still going to be under budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it it?
That's it.
Ready? E F. Excuse me. But just to follow up on that. And that is the, the issue of overtime. I think one of the reasons that we're hoping that you can up the compliment of police officers is to reduce the overtime, but it's not only a matter of cost, it's also, I guess, a lot of stress on the officers. Because, you know, somehow or other, overtime doesn't seem to be a big stress for firefighters, but it's a lot different for police officers because, you know, you're on the go all the time. And so, you know, you can't take the kind of breaks that firefighters can in between things. And so there's, you know, just a different kind of job requirement. And so I'm, I'm wondering about, you know, how we can really address that issue. I mean, I know we talked about before how difficult it is to, to get new police officers and particularly ones who are community-oriented and, you know, fit into Brisbane and all that sort of thing. Then there's all this, you know, competition. I don't know. I, I'd just be interested in your observations on the, the whole problem that you're trying to grapple with and deal with.
Right, and I, and I think you're right. It's a very, right now, we're competing against other agencies. Every agency right now is, is feeling the shortages. And we, it's a different, different, the applicants that are coming through just aren't some of the ones that, that would be good police officers, that would be successful. And, and again, I'm looking for not just a body to fill, I'm looking for the right personality that's going to fit in our department because we want somebody who's going to stay here and wants to work here, and it's going to be a good fit. Otherwise, we get somebody that's here for just a year and gets the training and gets their foot in the door and then moves on to another department. And we've been fortunate, the ones that we have brought on have stayed, have given us quite a, quite a, quite a number of years. But I think this last recruitment process, the first recruitment process we did, it'd been a while since we had gone through a recruitment. So it was a learning experience, I think, both for HR ourselves and Commander Meisner and myself. But this time around, the second time around, we were able to streamline, streamline it, streamline it much better, and we were able to move things quickly. For example, the day we had the oral boards for the, these, these applicants, we also did the administrative interview right after. So then we can get things going and add them in the following couple of days. So we actually, I'm really happy with the last recruitment process. I think that we're going to get some really good applicants coming through. But you're right, it, it has been, it's been difficult, and I think we're not the only ones that are feeling it. Other, other departments are feeling the same thing. I mean, we're getting to the point where, you know, a lot of these individuals are applying not only for our department but for many other departments, and they're looking for the first, first city to offer them a job. And although we would like to, I mean, we, our process was taken a little slower. Some agencies do in-house backgrounds because they have, they're big agencies and they can do that. We do, we actually contract out for our backgrounds. But again, we were able to, to streamline it, streamline it much, much better. And I think we're going to, these, this group, I was really, really happy with the group that we had coming through. And many of them, the personalities were, would be a great fit, and they were, they were individuals that were excited to come on board. So we're hoping that everything will, will continue to proceed forward. We have five in backgrounds right now, and things so far are going smoothly. So I, I would say maybe in the next, it's kind of hard to say. I think the next process would be their psychological and then their medical. So we could say probably within a month, month and a half, we can have five on board in the training program.
Let's hope.
Yes.
Okay. Two other things. You were talking about the, you know, the information technology maintenance contract. And I see it's here for thirty-one thousand eight hundred. And I guess, kind of my question is the coordination of this, and I guess this is not only to you but also to Stuart. Because, I mean, this is not only an issue for you all, you know, it's a special one for you, I understand that, but also for the entire operation of the city. How is all this getting coordinated? And is this all going to be working together in a fashion that, that's effective? Because, you know, if every department has got something of this nature, that, you know, the whole thing's going to get pretty expensive. So we want to make sure we're, it's happening in an effective way.
Yes, so the Police Department worked with Albert on this issue. I mean, there is particular challenges that the Police Department have that I, that, you know, in finance, we don't. They interact with DOJ, they interact with the FBI database. So there's a level of, there's some issues there that, you know, other departments don't have. So they brought in Nev, NevTech, who have expertise in that area. The other issue that the Police Department has that really the other departments don't is the twenty-four seven nature of their business. As you said, the Fire Department seemed to be able to take a rest during their shifts, whereas the Police Department never really has that same ability to rest. Because if they do, they get phone calls when they're in their cars and they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. So their twenty-four seven issues are different from everybody else's. So what we thought was it was best to work with another firm, and Albert, you know, recognized it as well. So from there, we are also looking at the overall city issues when it comes to the same kinds of issues. You know, we've asked for NevTech to, you know, give us their thoughts. It's a, it's the firm that the Police Department uses to update their computers, to keep the network up and running for them. Over the years, there's been a lot more capabilities of doing that off-site and doing it remotely. So that's what their look, that's what their, the model the Police Department has gone to, to make sure that they have twenty-four seven response. We're looking at the same kind of thing for our city, to see what they can do to keep our, you know, to have backup for us, to have our ability to interact between different systems. One of the challenges, particular challenges in the Police Department is, you know, you have the video and the cars has to interact with, you know, what's going on in the hard drives in the station. That needs to be up and running, and because they're doing video, they've got a lot more storage responsibility or needs than others of being able to maintain that. And starting to look at how do you maintain the security of that and have flexibility. And part of it is, you know, as you, we talked about before, having more stuff being stored in the cloud. But then if you're going to have more stuff stored in the cloud, how do you ensure that specific, especially in the Police Department's area, that specific need for security? And NevTech has that specialty, so that's why we brought them in. So, but we've also asked them to look at our overall city and what they would recommend to update and bring our technology back up into two thousand and fourteen. We talked about this during the opening. You know, we really put on hold after two thousand and six updating what we were doing. So we, we've talked to NevTech. We've also talked to NSITE today about the same kinds of issues, like how do we bring our system more up to date? And also recognizing how do we integrate it with not only the Police Department, not only the Fire Department issues, but also how do we integrate it with the telephone? How do we integrate it with, you know, email? Well, how do we integrate it with different computer platforms, be it tablet, be it laptop? Where, you know, wherever you are that you can get your email. So there's a lot of those kinds of issues. And that's, you know, so we're working closely with what the Police Department has done to make sure that we get an overall city plan. When we bring, when we do get that overall city plan, we would bring back to the Technology Subcommittee and talk about how do, how does everything integrate and what is the right solution? And there's a lot of things you can't do offsite. You know, when you bring a new computer on, you can't do that offsite. So there's, you know, if you have an immediate problem with a computer, you can't do that remotely. So those are the kinds of things, you know, that we would still be looking at our own staff to do. So, yeah, I mean, we are fully aware what Police Department did, and we are working to integrate what they're doing with what we're doing, but recognizing that their firewalls and some of their security issues have different, and that's why they went first. Because, you know, when they're down, it becomes a bigger problem, especially if you talk about, you know, ca, police cases and, you know, the DA needing information. You can't have them not be ahead of waiting for the city to catch up to them.
Right, okay. No, that, that's a very interesting response. Appreciate it very much. So you're kind of the pioneers, right?
Yeah, we are. Happy to be.
Good. Then I have just one other observation that, it's kind of a request, I guess. You know, a lot of the things that go on within your department are, are pretty interesting to most everybody, certainly to us. And yet, we don't really have a regular system of information. There's no real, you know, monthly report or whatever, I don't know. You know, these are the really, the number of cases that we've had, or these are the interesting things. I mean, a lot of really high visibility things have come up. And then we hear about them, you know, at the, at the point of high visibility, but then what happens to them two, three, four months that, down the road? You know, somehow or other, that information at least doesn't get to me anyway. And I'm curious. I, you know, I'd like to know what's going on. You know, like, you know, the, there was that, you know, skeleton that was found, and we did the, the person did the facsimile of what the person probably looked like, but then what's happened to that? You know, I mean, it's just kind of disappeared somewhere. And, and there have been a number of things like that, 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 you know, I'm sort of curious about, okay, so what happened? And sometimes, there isn't a whole lot to report, I understand that, but, but sometimes there is. And, and you hear the sirens all the time.
Well, actually, actually Clay can answer that because he used to do a monthly report where each department did an overview of all the stuff that was going on in a department. You remember those binders he used to do on a monthly basis?
Yeah.
And when we cut back, you know, because of the recession and stuff, we actually eliminated that. You know, because it became so time-consuming for the departments that they had all these other duties and stuff.
Right.
So, I mean, is that, about, that's exactly what happened. Yeah.
Yeah, well, I wasn't thinking about a, you know, complete data report or anything. Just kind of update on the, you know, the more salient, more interesting, more serious issues, you know, that would, would just be kind of interesting to know, kind of, maybe on one page, what's, what's going on and where this stands and what we've been able to do on this particular set of issues or whatever. You know, I mean, I mean, it, it seems as if we've gone to maybe too much information to, to know information. It seems, I mean, there ought to be some place in between where we can get sort of a sense of, you know, what's happening and what's happening to various cases and.
You mean like a quarterly thing or something?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Because, I mean, I know the cases take a long time to process.
They take forever to.
Right, because we do the, the blog, and that's the monthly blog that we post on the website. So maybe if we add it into our police website, I don't know how Bob usually works on our website, on maybe doing some highlight, maybe some of those highlighted cases. But you're right, I mean, some cases, there's really, you know, it takes months before it goes to court and there's any disposition, it could be months. And for example, was that boating incident, that took, what, two years before there was closure? So it would be, and then which ones would we want to, you know, I guess, an idea would want to be, which ones do we, what, what do we consider are the highlighted cases? And so I guess it's something maybe we can discuss at some point to see how we can work something that into the, the Police website.
Anyway, I would, I just, that's just my request to, I'm kind of interested in what's happening and, you know, what you're doing and so forth. And there's, there's no easy way to, at least I haven't found an easy way to, to follow that.
Sometimes I just get phone calls or emails. They just ask me, so what's happened to the status of this case? And I'll just respond back, but no, I, I see what you're requesting.
Okay, thank you.
Lori?
Thanks. So to follow up on the question that Cliff had about community-oriented policing. So you mentioned that there's one officer that was going to the schools, moved, moved away out of town or, you know, left, left this job and went to another town. So is it possible to have someone else who's currently in the department fulfill that liaison position? Or is it something that you'd have to look to one of the potential new hires for?
When we had the school resource officer position through the, that was paid through the grant, we had an officer that was dedicated to just the schools. He, they, he or she would go to Brisbane Elementary School, check in with the, with the, be there during some of the, the assemblies, check in with the principal. Then he or she would go up to, the school resource officer would go up to Littman and do the same thing, had an area where they can just sit and review reports and be available, be there during recess with the kids, interact with the kids, really build that bond, that relationship. And then would head over to the high schools, which would be Jefferson High School, Terranova High School, and Oceana. And also, at that point, at that time, all the schools had school resource officers. So they would go in and check in with those school resource officers to see if there were any issues that involved our kids from our community. So if there was an issue involving one of our commu, our, one of the kids from our community, that school resource officer would be called and they would respond out there. And there would be different, I mean, we do, cities deal with, with their kids and certain crimes differently. So then we had the opportunity and discretion to address whatever the concern was, whether it was truancy with the family, bless you, or whether it was, you know, some behavioral issues or so forth. When that grant was eliminated, we still had enough officers to, to still designate an officer as a school resource officer. But as things became, as the budget times, you know, narrowed down, then we, we eliminated the school resource officer position, and we just had an officer who was a liaison. So that officer would just go up to BES and Littman and just check in. Or be available if something happened, they, they had a contact person. So there was no real time spent at the schools. It was just a liaison, so if something happened to the school, the school knew who they can contact. The officer had expertise in juvenile-related offenses. And so currently, we don't have that any longer. We don't, we have officers who'll still go up there and check in in the schools and, you know, go and, and meet the principals and just walk the schools, but no one particular officer designated. Once we get up to full force and we have some, some of the, the officers have, you know, get some relief and all the overtime. know, get some relief in all the overtime they've been working and just trying to figure out scheduling, then we'll, we hope to one be, one time to be able to implement that again.
Okay.
But for now, it's, it's just a matter of just trying to get the, the patrol force back up and...
Sure, sure, yeah, I understand. I have to say, with the, the library work that you do, I, I definitely have seen the benefit of that. I've been at the storytime several times where, where the police have been there reading stories to the kids and it's, it's really nice. And then, you know, there's even been times where the officers have, like, taken us out to their patrol car and given us a tour of the car, let the kids sit in it, give out the little junior badges, and the kids just love it. And my son, actually, who's only two, he, when he sees a police car driving by, he goes, "Police officer." I mean, he already knows what that, what the uniform looks like and what the car looks like. So I think it's, it's great to be able to reach out to the kids and get them to feel comfortable and, you know, with police and feel like, you know, they're, they're people that we can turn to for help.
So then we realize there is a, there's a benefit in, in that connection between law enforcement and the kids at the school. I mean, we want it to be a positive, contact a positive, so that they can feel comfortable going to the police officer and not, not always that negative, because you hear that, oh, put your seatbelt on or you're, I'm gonna call the police. We don't want that, it to be a negative, that the, the child ends up with this, you know, negative connection between police officers and, and that type of, you know, environment. So we like to have that connection in a positive way. So we realize it is, it is really beneficial to get law enforcement officers up at the schools.
But, you know, you are the enforcement arm of the society, you know? So there's a little bit of that, you know, if you don't do so-and-so, we're gonna call the police. And that, this is kind of out there in the culture, I think. Pretty hard to go against that. Hey, Clay, have one other question to follow up on, Lori?
Sure.
You finished, Lori?
I had one other question, but you, if you...
It's just a follow-up.
Sure.
You're talking about the schools and the connection to the schools and, you know, with all the stuff that's going on here in the news, do we have a, a school safety program?
We have, we don't have a school safety program. We have an active shooter response program, protocol, that, that we all, in the county, it's a county-wide, but the school, the county is currently working on a safety school protocol. And that's working with the schools and with all the agencies in the county, so that we're all on the same page. Should something happen, that we're all gonna respond and, and respond in, in the same manner, because we'll be, if something was to happen, we'll be acting, asking for mutual aid from other agencies. And so we all need to train and be well-prepared to address any type of incident like that. So yes, the, the county is currently working on a school, a safety program, so that it's consistent to every school in San Mateo County. So that's up and coming.
Okay, so I, I'm, I'm, another information request, you know, when that sort of gets in place and there's some, something that would be interesting for us to know about?
Yes.
That might be something, a presentation or something, we can have one in general at some point. Because I think a lot of people are concerned about that, so.
Right.
It would be good to, to share that, I think.
And I'm sure it'd be something that would be done too with the, at the schools, with the Parent Teachers Association and, and, because the school, the teachers would be on board and there would be some training that would have to take place, so, yes.
Okay, great, sorry.
That's okay.
Hey, Lori?
And regarding the Avoid the 23 expenses, I understand that's a, you know, program to, to catch DUI offenders. So what, what, um, what kind of campaign, what, what have we done in our city for that and what, how, how many drunk drivers do we see in this town?
Well, the campaign is through the state, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct, Bob?
A grant.
A grant.
Okay.
And, and it gets, so all the overtime that, that's involved in the Avoid the 23, it involves all the agencies in San Mateo County. And it's during certain times of the year, like for example, Christmas, the holiday time, Christmas time and the New Year's Eve, where you're gonna have a high percentage of, of, of drug drivers. So we, it, so it's run by, one agency will host it and we send officers to participate in and they roam anywhere in the, in San Mateo County looking for drunk drivers. And the numbers are recorded as a county.
I see.
But the money and the overtime is paid by this grant.
Okay.
So we don't incur any costs. And, you know, the number, they take the number as one number, so I wouldn't be able to tell you specifically if there, you know, what the number was here in town, because they do, it's a county-wide effort.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I got just one more question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, you know, we get a fair amount, a fair amount of, of comment from the public in regards to parking and also running stop signs. So with the two new officers, do you see the quality of the engagement in, in town going up so that, you know, perhaps, you know, that type of presence will, will reduce those incidents with running the stop signs and then perhaps being more proactive with getting on folks to, to not park their car on, you know, in a particular part of the street for a long time?
Surely having the additional officers will help in, in many areas and enforcement, traffic enforcement being one of them. I mean, we do address a lot of those traffic areas if somebody calls in a specific intersection, which could be just around, and just about anywhere, everywhere in town. But if somebody calls a specific intersection and we, we put it on our traffic board and that's part of the, the daily enforcement areas that those officers will hit during their, their patrol time. But as you can see, when, on day shift, if you have, right now, which we currently have one sergeant and one officer, a lot of their time is spent, one officer may be spending a lot of time inside writing. So yes, when we bring on more officers, it will alleviate, you know, that one officer will be able to stay in and write on the reports while you still have others going out working traffic enforcement and some of the other, the areas of concern. So it, it will make a difference. I mean, you're always gonna have those that are just, wanna behave badly and are still gonna, you know, run the stop signs, but surely the presence, you'll, there'll be more presence out on patrol.
Very good. Yeah, 'cause, you know, that, that, that makes our streets safer.
Yes.
So, thanks.
Thank you.
That's it, Clark.
Okay. Go ahead. I have one more thing.
Okay, one more. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. Another, another thought, I'm thinking of that percentage of time for the day officers spent in report writing, it's just 40%, yeah. You know, I understand that there's now technology, speaking of, in the technology, in which you can just speak into something, voice recognition, immediately turns it into writing. It seemed to me that that might maybe reduce the percentage of time spent doing this? I don't know, just a thought.
It's possible, they, you still have to, I know that we had something like that some years ago and, and you have to, sometimes you have to go back and as you spend more time having to clea, clean it up, then it's, then the time and effort actually spent typing it. Because a lot of times, some of these reports, some of your basic reports, there's already a template in, that officer may have written a similar report. But it's, it's, it's more the investigations, that, the calling of victims or trying to telephone individuals, processing of, of getting statements, getting recorded statements, maybe having to go down to the San Mateo County, the Keller Center or the Medical Center for exams. So all of that encompasses in the report writing, because...
That's included in there?
Right, it's under, that should be worded investigations. And when under investigation, one of the aspects is report writing, evidence processing and all the other things that fall under, under that area.
Yeah, makes more sense.
Yes.
And does the report writing have to occur, like, behind a, a desk or can, do you have the, like, do you have laptops or the ability to use, to do any reports while you're out sitting in a car?
There is, we are, we do have laptops in the car and we encourage officers to take them out, but, you know, sometimes, just depending on the day or, or the evening, you know, finding a, a safe place where you can kind of concentrate and, and be still aware of your surroundings, so that nobody comes upon you that, you know, for officer's safety reasons. So that's also taken into consideration. So, but yes, we do encourage them to use as much time, go park, maybe somewhere where you're visible on Bay Shore at the park and ride and you slow the traffic down, because they see the patrol, the patrol car while you're doing your report. So yes, that is encouraged.
That was... We're gonna be encouraging the officers...
But, can you, can you, uh, undermine?
That's part of the advantage of, of going to RIMS is their report writing component is much more comprehensive than the one we have now. So we will be encouraging officers to, to do more of the report writing in the car once we go to that new system. But since it does involve the investigative component, component, you know, officers need a desk, they need a phone, they need other things available, so they, they are always gonna have to spend some time in the station to write some of the reports and do some of their investigations.
Thank you.
Okay. Lisa, thank you very much. I just have one, one small request. As our new officers come on board, you know, we're gonna be moving our council meetings to Thursday nights and maybe when they pass muster, that perhaps can bring them in and introduce them to the council, just so that they know who we are and we know who they are. I've, I've meet most of them anyway, you know, just, just being out and about, but I think it's good for the community to, to see and it's good, good visibility for the officers, you know, to kind of see how we function too, you know, and just have them drop in and you can introduce them or Bob or whoever, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I think that'd be a great idea. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, no, I was thinking, you know, that, that they have this Public Works Week and Randy brings the whole crew in, you know?
That's kind of hard for...
I don't know, I was just thinking, how would you do that with the police department? You know, you couldn't really. But, but it is good to have everybody know who everybody is. I mean, that, I really like that idea.
Yeah.
Right. And what I'd like to do too, we'll send you an invitation when we do the swearing-in, so that you can, they come in with their families and it's a proud moment for them when they get their badge pinned on them as well. So I'll also include you in that email, so that if you're available, you can stop by.
Okay.
Why the black band today?
That's for the, in respect for the Las Vegas officers that were, that were shot in the, in the restaurant. Yes, I think their service is, if I'm not mistaken, tomorrow. So then, then the band comes off after they've been laid to rest.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you very much.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay, brings us to community development and John, I guess you're up. Clay tell you why you put your last on here, right?
No. You told me you saved the best for last.
The best for last, okay.
I said if I have to sit here all night, so does he. I had to read the draft DIR for Open Space and Ecology. He's gotta go through all the budget hearings.
Exactly.
I just thought it was fair.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Again, I don't know if this will be the best for last, but this will, should be fairly quick and I should be able to buzz through this presentation, take any questions you have. I'm gonna break out the items that, that we do routinely on that pie chart ahead of you, the baylands and baylands ecology, planning applications, city-initiated planning efforts, administration, code enforcement, building and planning commission support. I know there's a request to give sort of some proportional breakdowns. Unfortunately, this pie chart doesn't reflect that, but I can walk you through that real quickly. We do have a half-time code enforcement officer who's basically fully devoted to that function. Have a one and a half positions of administrative support and they primarily provide building department and building permit services and public information, some limited support for planning commission administration, baylands and office administration, such as the, maintaining the department's website, which is something we really do make a point of trying to keep current with ongoing activities. Then we have a half-time special assistant, retired senior planner Toon. His time is spent fully on city-initiated planning, which is the housing element update, as well as implementation of some of the zoning code amendments required for the last housing element cycle. A number of cases that the, the, the planning subcommittee has seen and will continue to see as we try to finish implementing that previous housing element. And then the senior planner, full-time senior planner, primarily, you know, again, there's a cyclical nature to the work, but last calendar year, last fiscal year, probably spent about three-quarters of his time on the building permit processing of plan check. And we had a fairly busy building year last year. About a 15% of so on time of private planning applications that are going before the planning commission and the remainder of his time spent on city-initiated planning programs. And there's a certain limitation on his time that I think we'll get into when we talk about some of the recommendations, budget recommendations for next year. And then my time, I spent anywhere from 50 to two-thirds of my time on baylands and ecology-based efforts. The, the remainder of my time primarily on limited amount of time in administrative and, you know, split my time among building issues and planning issues as well, so. But the, the baylands is the bulk of my days are spent primarily on, on those ongoing efforts. I think, again, the couple of the new items that are being proposed for next budget year, one is to upgrade the half-time administrative position to full-time. That'll help significantly in terms of coverage, counter-coverage, when you have basically the public works counter and the planning counter, those, those two individuals, when one, one of them leaves, it makes the, the coverage issue somewhat problematical, isn't really great customer service provided. The half-time position has aided that substantially. Maybe a lot more benefit when you get that additional half-time. It'll also allow for some more proactive maintenance of our, our electronic building permit system, the Greenview system, which we utilize, but we haven't been able to, I think, fully utilize to its capability because of limitations on, on staff time and really getting comfortable with the system and be able to roll it out a little more aggressively. So that would be one of the, I, I think, another benefit of having that additional half-time position. And then again, the senior planner position, which we would anticipate potentially underfilling at a lower level, bringing in someone who's not maybe a senior planner level. And that would be primarily to provide additional staff resources for city-initiated planning efforts. As I indicated, literally 90%, 95% of the senior planner's time is spent on privately-initiated activities, leaves very little time for, for things like the green building ordinance update, other code amendments that need to be done. And the part-time position, the retired planner position, again, that's limited to half-time, the hours are fairly, you know, it's, his schedule is, is, is his schedule. He is a retired person, he comes in and does his work when he needs to, but there isn't a lot of extra flexibility for staff in terms of giving him additional assignments, other activities that, that we really do think need to be done. So as that position were to be filled, we'd anticipate over time, we'd rely probably less heavily on the half-time, that special assistant position, have him finish up some of the very discreet work programs he's undertaken, not to date, but that newer programs and additional activities would, would be primarily within the, the new position's responsibility, so. And I think some of these ongoing activities, again, everyone's quite familiar with the baylands DIR and the planning activities that are ongoing. A general plan update, I think, is something that ultimately the council's gonna have to decide how you want to proceed with that. That was a planning program that Bill Prince undertook and there's a lot of, well, staff time and community time and commission time and even council time, kind of going through a component of that. But given the inability to get the DIR for the baylands done in a timely way, that, that general plan update was unable to be adopted in its entirety. And at this point, much of that work is five to seven years old. Really is gonna be a question for the council. You know, with the baylands DIR being published, that does provide, I think, some good environmental foundation, but there's still a number of policy questions for the council. Do you want to rely on, on some of this older input, frankly, and, and work? And, and that's not a decision for you to make tonight, but I think that's a dialogue we'll want to have with you over the upcoming year to really decide how you want to move forward. There are certain things that need to be done. In any event, I think we had a conversation at the planning commission with the subcommittee not too long ago and they kind of fleshed out some of the issues. There's, there's a number of technical requirements to update in the document, there's filling in gaps from the environmental work that the baylands DIR doesn't include, you know, areas outside the baylands, even on a cumulative basis. And then one thing I didn't, I really didn't bring up when we discussed it at the planning commission is the fact that the current update, 2007 update, didn't reflect any of the 2010 census data. So again, you have an update, informational update to be provided. So those are all ongoing. We would hope to have the latest version of the housing element adopted by January of next calendar year, 2015, to meet the state deadline. But then there's gonna be a rollout of implementation measures required to, to fulfill the requirements of that housing element. Most prominently, the mixed use and rezonings for, for additional residential sites that we did not accommodate. residential sites that we did not accomplish from the last housing element primarily in the form of the Crocker Park mixed use and looking into some of those other extension of residential along the edge of Crocker Park. So that would be really a work program that, again, the new position would would support substantially in those efforts. And also whatever else comes out of the Crocker Park Technical Assistance Program, if there are more planning programs or efforts that result from that, that would give us some resources to accomplish that. With that, that would conclude my comments. I'd be glad to take any questions you have.
Okay, Lori?
Sure. Okay, so in looking at the budget for professional services, I see that there's a.
What, page, Lori?
On page 83, there's a substantial decrease from last year, from 303,000 to 193,000. I'm wondering if you can talk about that. It looks like there's nothing budgeted for the review of the general plan update as there was 75,000 for last year, and I was wondering whether that was spent. And then there's a decrease from 50 down to 25,000 for planning assistant. Can you talk about what that is?
Primarily those two. One, the general plan update was kind of a placeholder in the event we did move forward on a very formal basis with the general plan update. Given the delay in processing and publishing of the final of the draft DIR for the Baylands, we did not utilize any of those services. So those are unspent monies, budgeted but unspent. You know, will we get started this upcoming fiscal year? I mean, Stuart may speak to whether he's considering that a rollover or whatever. We also would anticipate that if we get that additional position in-house, that they could provide at least a good start on some of the services that are going to be required to update the the actual document. Things like the technical side in terms of state law, making sure the document's compliant with state law. So we'd be able to do some of that service in-house with our new position. So part of that would be sort of offset by by the additional salary of having a new position, if that's what the council chooses to do. Planning assistance falls in that same category. Again, some of that is considered funding that was used to to support that position, the half-time position. And so that kind of gets absorbed. That is in case there is something that comes up that's either unexpected in terms of that we need outside planning services, consulting services for a city-initiated program. Nothing that I'm aware of at the moment, but if it's something were to come up in the course of the year. For example, with the the TAP and some of that mixed-use zoning, we might want to look at getting some outside services to come up with either some assistance in a form-based code or other zoning tool to actually implement that. So those would be funds would be available for that. And the other thing of the one-time expense was the ULI, Crocker Park Surety.
Okay. Thank you.
Ray?
So where does Tim show up in here?
So the $25,000 that we have for the planning assistance in 52235 is the money that we budget, because when we budget for it, we're not always sure if it's going to be Tim specifically or if there's other outside planning assistants that we need. When we do use Tim, he's paid for out of salaries because he was, he's part of, you know, he's on board of staff. So what you would anticipate is less, when we use Tim, we won't use the full 25,000 here, but we'll use a little bit more, you know, it'll be a higher in the salaries. But what we would anticipate is it's the 20, it's that line item that says planning assistance, and it's either for Tim or for other outside planning assistants.
Because I noticed that, you know, there's no part-time salaries in the approved budget for 1314, at least it doesn't seem to be any figures here. And so that's why I'm trying to figure out, okay, so where is he? And so it's, I'm presuming it's under professional services, but if he's under salary, then it would have to be part-time, right?
It would be, but so 1314 is still a budget number. So we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't show anything there because it's what you budgeted. And we budget him to as a professional service in 52235. But what you'll see is, you know, when we, next year, when we have the 1314, we'd see a higher number in the part-time salaries, but we would have, we will have a lower number spent in professional services.
Okay, so it's kind of a trade-off?
It is.
Okay, okay, good. So when you do all this Bayland stuff, and a lot of it's reimbursed from the developer when they pay their bills, how does that get reflected in here? Or does it?
It doesn't. And the answer is, of course, always a yes and a no. So his time is budgeted to the general fund. However, within the revenues of, in the general fund, we have a revenue source called developer reimbursement, and that is on page 32. And council, I'm going to look to Clay, two or three years ago, signed a new agreement with the developer where staff time would not be billed directly, but they would, but based on what we were averaging at that point in time, we would get quarterly payments from them, and we would just give them a flat dollar amount for all, for staff that we use. And I think that was three or four years ago that we signed that amendment to their agreement. So we receive 170, we budgeted about 174,000 for that purpose.
How much?
174,000. And that covers staff time.
Okay. Because I was just thinking that, you know, in the case of the community development department, you know, a lot of their activity is reimbursed. And one, of course, is developer reimbursement, which is by far the biggest, but then you get all the permit fees and so forth. So there's, you know, it's quite a bit is covered with with actual revenue of some sort or other. And unfortunately, the way this is set up, you know, that doesn't doesn't come through very clearly. And so it was just, it was just an observation, really, I guess. I like the idea of someone new in in planning. I think, you know, with Tim's departure and the continuation of the huge workload related to the Baylands and also the general plan and so forth, I mean, there just isn't enough staff there. So I'm happy to see that. I hope you have more luck than Lisa has had in the recruitment area. I don't know whether there's, everybody is hiring planners too. I don't know. But I know that can be frustrating, you know, when you get the authorization of the decapified people. But I'm assuming that it's not as difficult in the planning world, am I right?
I think right now it's, it could be more of a seller's market, I guess, but I'm confident we'll be able to get a very qualified pool of applicants.
Okay. Where does our special legal counsel for the the Baylands, where does that show up in here?
That wouldn't, because that's reimbursed by the developer.
But so there isn't a, wouldn't show up at all?
It does not. It's just an in and out. So it's, when we talked about earlier, we talked about the trust accounts.
Right.
In the 700 fund. So we don't budget for that directly because we don't know exactly what we're going to be spending. And it's just a, whatever we bill, we get back. So we don't budget for that at the beginning of the year, anticipating what the workload will be, because for those, the workload could vary as well as we may be getting new projects that we don't know about at the beginning of the year.
So again, there's a question of the of the full impact of the activity, financial activity, full expenditures, full revenue, is not really reflected in the way this is presented.
Right. From a budget perspective, it is not. But from a accounting perspective, when we do the financial, annual financial plan, we show all of our, all of our revenues, all of our expenses for all funds.
Okay, all right.
And it's just a challenge of saying, you know, we don't know what work we're going to do from the Baylands upfront. We don't know how much of the attorney we would use or how much we would, you know, if we need special assistance. So we don't budget for that upfront, because it's just, it doesn't have an impact on city finances directly, because it's just a reimbursed account. So, but when you look at the annual report at the end of the year, you would see what was, what we received and what we spent.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Terry?
I see we have an increase on the salaries requested budget, but that doesn't seem to collate with the flexible benefits increase that went from 54,000 to 122,000. I'm wondering if you can comment on that.
So when we go from a part-time person to a full-time person, that goes from an unbenefited person to a full-benefited person. And then when we have the new person, that's another full-time benefitted person. So those two could add upwards of 50, 40,000 if they're both for a. Family. So that would be part of it. The other part of it is that we budgeted a 5% increase in both of the two years. We talked about the, you know, when we got the got the agreement, we did not budget a health increase in fiscal year 1314 as part of the budget, but we approved a contract that was a five, you know, was a 5% increase in health. And then we have another 5% increase in health budgeted for next year based on the contract. So those are the big, those are like the major issues. And I'd have to, you know, I'd have to go see if any other changes happened. Oh, the other issue was John's time last year was slightly budgeted in successor agency. That was, you know, if we, you know, we did not do that again this year. So all of John's costs were budgeted here. So that increased the health benefits for that one as well, for that portion of the cost. Because the concern is, if you, you know, as Ray knows, the concern is with the successor agency, we were were getting questioned by the San Mateo County College, Junior College District about how much time our staff is spending.
The trollers?
Hmm?
The troller?
So this year, we decided, you know, there was no time that John spent on the successor agency. We did not know that going into it. But the successor agency is much more of a financial system issue and is much more of a management as opposed to a planning issue. So we removed him from that budget. So those are the, you know, I, if you want, I can go a little bit more in depth after I looked at my spreadsheet.
And then along those same lines, the deferred compensation?
So for new employees, we don't do the supplemental stipend. So all new employees with us after 2008 get a deferred comp as opposed to supplemental stipend, because it saves us money in the long run. So as we get new employees, the deferred comp goes up.
Give me an explanation of of those terms.
Sure. Deferred compensation is, so the agreement that we have with our employees, and this was what we did in 2008. So in 2008, we negotiated with our employees a number of issues that would save us money in the long term. One of them, of course, is the PERS, where we went from a 2.7 for employees to a 2.0 for new employees hired after 2008. The other issue that we looked at was our long-term retiree health costs. Prior to 2008, we had an agreement with our employees where an employee who works with the city for a certain number of years would get access, would get a supplemental stipend payment for the rest of their life based on the Kaiser rate. And that, of course, is what the OPEB issue is and becomes very expensive for cities going down, going further down the road. As the health insurance costs went up, we recognized what that increase would be. So in 2008, we said for new employees hired after 2008, instead of giving them a supplemental stipend in retirement, we would instead do a deferred comp where we would give them a defined contribution. The defined contribution is, I'm going to try and remember this without looking at the contract, I think it's one and a half percent that we would just give them. And then if they did another 5%, another two and a half percent of their money, we would do another 1% kicker for that. So we budget for two and a half percent for new employees who've been hired after 2008 to be in deferred comp, as opposed to what it would cost us to pay on a supplemental stipend or the long-term retiree health costs.
So it's a post-employment benefit that we're paying it?
But we're doing it, we went from a defined, a defined benefit plan to a defined contribution plan.
Thank you.
Welcome.
That's the key, that last phrase.
That that really is, you know, as I, as we talk about the retiree health, you know, our OPEB right now, we think is right around that $6 million, but it's not going to grow with new employees to the same extent, because we went to, from that defined benefit plan going forward to a defined contribution plan for new employees. And we also allowed existing employees to participate in that. And that reduced us from, I think, at our high, we had an $8 million deferred compensation, OPEB number. And I think we're down to 6 million based on people taking the deferred, taking the defined benefit upfront. So that has saved us money in the long term.
That's the only questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Clark. Yeah, all my questions in regards to the budget have already asked, but there was something that came up that I'd like to understand. So Stuart, you talked about how John's salary is, it's all in here, though, and in compensating for work that's done on the Baylands, it's not part of our contract to pay for salaries. But, so we have this 174,000 that is paid by UPC. Does that show up as as revenue?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And it's not just for John's time. I mean, there's a portion of Clay's time was in it, a portion of my time, a portion of Betsy's time, a portion of Randy's time, a portion of Lynn's time, who does the billing. And what we found was that, you know, it's difficult for us to track every minute, as you would have to when you're trying to get a reimbursement. So what we said is, you know, we took a, I think it was a six-month average or a year average of what people were doing. And we said, here's what the cost is.
All right. Thank you.
As a follow-up, is that going to increase as time increases and planning gets more involved as this process moves forward?
I would have to look at what the agreement said.
There's a cost of living increase in it. But if we want, if we felt that there was a significant increase in staff time that we felt we should be compensated for, that would be something we'd have to open up a new round of negotiation on.
And and fees such as what we get on the soil processing are supposed to cover the costs of administering that program on its own?
Well, yeah, but they're just the, they're just a revenue to the general fund. But yeah, the, yeah, there is a, there is a administrative fee on that, too. So. You're right. You're correct. There's a whole number of fees that UPC pays. Probably put together a list for you at some point. So there's very various different categories. But in terms of the staff reimbursement part, we went to this model a few years ago, and I think it's probably still pretty reflective of the of the the work. You know, it's something we may want to revisit at some point, depending on, you know, how things go forward in the future.
Thank you.
The plan and check, building inspection, outsourcing, still happy with that?
With CSG? Yes, I think they provide good service, pretty good value to the to the city and to our clientele. Having that kind of institutional knowledge of buildings and projects is is really invaluable, I think. I mean, there's always the ability to reopen that, but on my, on my.
my, on my side, I'm quite happy with their performance.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yep, I'm good.
John, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Keep up the good work. So Stuart, you wanted to talk about-
Yes. So the next step in the process is on June nineteenth, I'll bring you the, a number of different resolutions. As I always do, I'll bring you the appropriation limit, which talks, which is how much money we're allowed to collect in taxes versus how much money we do collect in taxes. I will bring you the master fee schedule. I will bring you the successor agency and go more, talk more about the successor agency next week. The other one is the city's budget resolution for adoption, adoption resolution. So what we normally, what we do with that one is we have what's called Exhibit A, which shows all the changes that have been made by the city council in the budget. I updated that through what we did on Monday night. I am not in the office until, again, until Wednesday of next week. So I will not update Exhibit A for the changes you made, you talked about tonight to be added. So what I will do at that time is bring you a new, sorry, a new resolution and a new Exhibit A on Thursday night for you to see. Right. And then, so that's the process pro, aspect of it. The other issue that we're, you know, we're going to be dealing with, and I didn't talk about this, and I apologize when it, for the, on the pool issue, was that we have our two head lifeguards will be leaving us this year. They're finally moving on with their lives. So what we're looking at doing is replacing those two positions with what I would call, with what we're calling a recreation coordinator, who will be working probably forty hours during the summer, and then maybe thirty, twenty to thirty hours the rest of the year, as opposed to the head lifeguard positions that we have now. There should not be a change in the overall cost for these positions, for this, for us, but it will give us a, a more hands-on ability to deal with some of the issues that you had talked about with the pool and having somebody being more directly responsible for the pool. And then not at the same level that we had as a supervisor, still trying to save that money. So this person would still report through Steve to whoever's, you know, through my, to myself or to Clay, whoever's in charge of the Parks and Recreation Department at that time.
And they'll have a lifeguard certification?
They will. So they'll be able to be on deck.
Okay.
And then the, the one other thing you'll see next Thursday, just so that you're aware of it, is that we'll be bringing forward a number of job classification updates to reflect the things that we're talking about here in the budget, including what Stuart just talked about with the recreation quarter coordinator. We'll update a, a job spec on that to identify the aquatic background required for that position. And I think we got the engineering assistant and some of the other, other ones.
Right. So we have an engineering tech, the recreation coordinator, we have the payroll and utility technician that we talked about at the very beginning, and the finance department. We have a couple of other just general updates to make the classifications, and I can't remember what they were.
The planning position.
The planning position.
So that, that's-
I think there's a-
-a little bit expedited from what you've seen in the past, so we're trying to get that all kind of coordinated with the budget adoption so that the, the budget's ready to go in terms of being implemented.
Right. And we can start recruiting starting July first, because without the specifications, we can't start the recruitment process.
I have, I have one comment. Thank you for giving us the sheet with the one-time expenditures. Would it be possible to update that with the associated costs next to it?
Yes.
So that if it's something that we decide is not fit into our budget, that we can-
Yes.
-see what we may or may not want to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just one process thought. So you're going to be working on the updates based on conversation tonight, next Wednesday, right?
Or this weekend.
Well, I won't push it, but it would, I don't know, it would be helpful to me anyway, if I could see it at least before the meeting.
Okay.
Maybe by email or something.
Sure. I mean, you'll see some of them, because I updated it based on what you did last week or Monday night. So I can get, let me see what I can do and get it, I'll get it to you before, I'll get an email to you before the meeting.
Okay. Great.
So we're not going to have that information for review until?
Right. I'm, I'm in Half Moon Bay Thursday and Friday, and Betsy is actually, the reason she left early tonight is she's on a plane tomorrow morning at five-fifty-five in the morning, or some god-awful hour like that, that we'll hear her flying overhead in town.
Okay. Is it?
So it's a think quick on your feet next week for our budget decisions.
Very good. So entertain a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're adjourned. Good night, everybody.